Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for February 21st. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stephen, do we have any announcements tonight?
Just a reminder that citizens' petitions are due to the Select Board Town Manager's Office. I think they close business next on Tuesday, the 28th. And tomorrow there'll be a lane closure on 91 South, just south of the Long Meadow Curve, for some water main work that a contractor for the town will be doing. So just if you're traveling that way tomorrow, just be mindful of the potential for delays.
And I just noticed, we have to have our conflict of interest, we have to get online, and it's all boards or just employees?
All boards and committees.
All boards and committees.
Have to complete the conflict of interest training.
And that will be due April 7th, I believe?
I'm not sure. If you have any questions, please contact Catherine Ingram, Town Clerk.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And do we have any resident comments tonight? No. All right. We'll start with the interviews. We have two interviews for the new building committee, Mary Ann Morris and Louise Kroll. Could you please come up to the microphone together? And though it does not amplify, it's necessary for recording the microphone. So would you please state your names and maybe a small statement on why you'd like to join the building committee and what you feel you bring to the table?
Sure. Hi, I'm Mary Ann Morris. I live at 44 Essex Court. I've been there for about 19 years. I'm currently on the DPW, the new DPW Facility Committee, and was also on the Town Manager Task Force that preceded that. It's been a great experience and I'm excited to see this project advancing. That was my first foray into, you know, a town committee. So it was a great experience and I thought when this one, new committee, was formed, it'd be a good match for me as well. I've got 30 years of experience in the engineering industry. I recently retired, actually, from Ty &amp; Bond, a civil environmental engineering firm in Westfield. So I've got more time to devote to such things as well. So that's why I'm throwing my hat in the ring.
Thank you.
I'm Louise Kroll, and I've lived in, I live at 43 Crest Avenue, used to live on Benedict Terrace. We've lived in town for 28 years, since 1989. I have served on an elected town board for two terms. That was the Long Meadow School Committee, which I also chaired at one point. In addition to that, and I believe this was after I left that board, I served on a subcommittee of the Long Range Planning Committee. And our subcommittee was charged with making recommendations to the Long Range Planning Committee regarding land use and planning. So as I recall, because this was in the early 2000s now, probably around, I'm thinking 2003, 2004, two of our recommendations, one of them obviously was implemented, and that was for the purchase of land from the First Church of Christ Scientist. And since then, it has been expanded, the Long Meadow Shops. That came out of our subcommittee and was adopted by the Long Range Planning Committee. We also discussed others, which recommendations, I don't have a full list of them, but I know that some of them are still being discussed that came out of that subcommittee. I'm an attorney. My practice is in the area, I've practiced in many areas, but my practice has included not only education law, but elder. I do, I'd work a lot with elders at this point in my, in my career. We've raised two children in town, and both, one of them is, I gotta put this plug in. My daughter's a nurse in Boston, and my son is a student at UMass Amherst.
Thank you. Any questions for the two candidates?
No. It kind of completes the, you know, what we had identified as, you know, lawyer, engineer.
Thank you very much for coming and interviewing.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
We still have one spot left, if anyone else wants to come and interview. And once we get all of the interviews together, we will be making a decision the next meeting or so, and inform you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
And we're looking for another interview for the Conservation Commission, Andrea Chason. You want to tell us your address and a little bit about yourself?
Okay. So I live 236 Crestview Circle. I've been here since the end of 88. Same house, same place. Let me think. I am semi-retired as lawyer/mediator conflict resolution work. I do, I am a reservist with FEMA, so I go out a couple of times a year to natural disasters and help with conflict and issues within the workplace, within the community. I'm a master gardener. I'm proud to tell you that I became one a couple of years ago, and I have been involved in the Long Meadow in different ways, not officially, but years ago when my kids were in school, I was part of what was called the District Learning Team at that time, and it went on for quite a number of years. And of course, I'm blocking the name of the superintendent, so hopefully that won't be held against me. And I've been involved with the environmental part of this town and worked on an energy committee that was put together, is not hackway, to look at helping to bring more environmental awareness to the community and see what we could do around energy conservation. And I help with developing the green communities and bringing that to the town. I'm interested in conservation and have been for quite a while, and I saw that there was an opportunity and thought, gee, this would be great. Neither of my kids are in town, but I did raise both kids here. I have a strong environmental daughter. She's out in the Midwest doing environmental work, so at any rate, I think, any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have questions, Chason. I believe the Conservation Commission has some, some training that's required to go with it, and I was wondering if you were, you know, aware of that or certainly willing and able to undergo, and I have no clue what the training is, but I think there is a-
Probably had to read a regulation and make sure that you know what's going on with them, I would think.
At least that much. I think it's a little bit more.
But no, I think that would be great. I would like it. And actually, I did spend some time looking over the last few years, what the minutes have been and the issues have been brought before the Conservation Committee, the Commission, and most of it seems to be reactive. I'm not sure how proactive it is, but years ago, when I was in Maryland and part of the Attorney General's Office, I did work around wetlands and things of that sort. So I'd be happy to participate in training and see what's going on now.
Any other questions?
Well, I just, you know, when you think about preserving spaces, and do you think of it as, as like, you know, just preserving them and not, people not using it, having access, or you look more like passive recreation stuff? Do you have any kind of preference there or?
I think, to me, the concert, the whole development of conservation is really around natural habitats for wildlife, and the idea being that you want to protect the natural aquifers that are feeding our various communities and being clear about not wanting to put unnecessary footprints in, that's going to get in the way of an ecosystem. So when I think about the habitat component, I think about a combination of how do we enjoy it as a community? I've spent years, you know, walking through different parts of, I guess it's the bird sanctuaries and all of the areas down there, and really enjoying that and being part of the community. And we have natural, with Louise, we live on a shared wetland that kind of backs up to the Long Meadow Country Club. And so I'm, when I'm doing gardening work, I'm very conscious of how do I go about preserving that. So I'd like to see more around the awareness of what conservation is in the community, so it's not just, oh my God, I have to apply to the Conservation Committee, Commission to make sure that I don't impede something, but to make it really part of a living, breathing component, I think would be fun to do. That's part of the reason why I'm interested in this. I don't know if there's room for that, and it'd be interesting to see if there is.
I think your ideas are very exciting. It's a national treasure we have there. I understood it's like the preserved area near the river. It's like the only one left in New England and the largest.
I know. It's gorgeous.
And as you said, most residents really don't understand how much is down there and the beauty of it. So I think you'll bring an interesting perspective to it. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we will get back to you. What we do is we interview now and then we vote at the next session.
Great.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe I owe you an email. I just realized that. I will get back to you. Thank you. All right. Moving right along to the Energy Task Force report. We have, this will be the first time we are presenting the Energy Task Force. Anyone here from the Energy Task Force? Yes. So come on up, see, you can answer. Thank you for coming. I know. It's been moved around so much, and I appreciate you being able to make tonight. So in there, your packet were two. One is the report from the Energy Task Force, and the other is every year, the green communities, the town manager has to present a whole data complex on how we're doing, and that was done in December, and I included that because there were some great charts in there, and it sort of gave you an idea of where the Energy Task Force was going in regards to its recommendations to this board as well as the school committee. It's the only task force we have which combines school committee members as well as residents as well as the Select Board. And it's, we just put it together last year, and this is our first report. And we have a member here. You want to tell us your name?
Rob Kapner, 55 Mill Road.
And he joined the commit, the task force, and you are also, your background is, you're a-
Well, I was actually on the Conservation Commission for a while.
Oh, you were.
And I'm a public school educator, administrator in Summers, Connecticut.
So do you have any questions where you had today have a chance to review the report?
Marie?
Yes.
I guess I, I read through this, you know, clearly it's a, it's reported the status of progress against specific goals that the Energy Task Force created, specifically looking at town buildings. But I wanted to use the opportunity to talk about something a little bit more, because I think I saw an opening for it in the, in the documents. I've had a discussion with a representative of Senate President Stan Rosenberg's office about a MIT-based group that is looking to do some work for individual home conservation. And essentially what they do, and it's apparently very sophisticated, I've just had a brief discussion with this woman, that they, in cold weather, they can drive around and take very high, high sophisticated photos of your house, and it's more than just a thermal image. I mean, they can tell you a lot more that's going on around it. And they've got funding to do it, and they're going to be doing it in a number of communities in Western Massachusetts. I don't know if it's five or eight or whatever it is, but, but at some point, it's going to come to the town of Long Meadow to encourage that information to get to its residents and theoretically encourage the residents to do something about it, those who have less efficient energy homes. And I don't know if the green, if the Energy Task Force is, is the route to do this. This person called me and I said, it probably falls somewhere around our building commissioner and, you know, but I'm not quite sure where it is, but we are a green community. But I just would like to be able to, and I don't know if it's you, Marie, or if it's Rob, to get you folks in touch with this person who came to me. There's a, I mean, there's a bundle of money put, put into this project, as you can imagine. I mean, it's millions of dollars, I believe, that they're spending on doing these projects. But somehow the, you know, we've got to communicate to people in their homes, whether it's through inserts and bills, or it's through websites, or Facebook, or whatever it is. But I certainly would like to encourage us to do that, and I think if that's part of, if our Energy Task Force goal goes beyond just town buildings, which I think it does, it might be something we can do.
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful idea. I had heard through someone else about this pilot program, maybe going to Long Meadow, and I'd asked that, contact someone from the task force so we could try to get it on our recommendations.
Can you just send me the information, Marie, and I'll make sure that this woman gets it?
Yes.
Be happy to talk to them if, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, because we've been doing education and we've been using our webpage to try to get information out, and so we would be interested in following up, I think, on that.
And if there's grants and they need homes, you know, maybe task force members can get their houses retrofitted.
There's been a couple of people who have put up all the money, so there, that it's been paid for, but the, the key is that it's, it's more than just the, it's more than just getting a thermal image. Apparently, it comes with a multi-page report, and it really goes through and describes your home, and it's a lot, it's amazing how much they can tell through a drive-by, high sophisticated image, from what I'm told.
But they're not applying it to public buildings.
They can apply it to public buildings as well. I mean, the question is, what are you going to do about it? But, you know, what are we going to do when we get the information? But I'm sure they'll be glad to do that as well. All we've got to do is ask them. They have not yet scheduled it. They wanted to do it, and the reason they went to Senator Rosenberg's offices because they needed to do it this winter. Obviously, it's better to do it when the weather's cold than when the weather's warm, it doesn't tell you as much, so they're, they're trying to get around to it.
Good.
So I, I think the next step that we're looking for is, there were recommendations. What we did was we looked at the goals set on the Green Community Agreement that the town manager put together, and we saw how we were progressing, and we are staying on target, but we looked at which buildings appeared to be having problems or were less efficient, and we were also looking to take the goals and see where our next steps might be on it. A lot of these things that were recommendations were already brought up, and I know the town manager's already working on them, and some of them included the solar farm on the old DPW complex. It's already in the work. The design zero-energy DPW building, we recommended that be considered also for the adult center. But I think, like, number one, which is saying we look at energy conservation as a metric in prioritizing capital projects, it would be up to the Select Board to decide if they were going to accept all the recommendations or some of the recommendations. So I think we'd be looking for a vote to see, or if, questions, if you had questions before, you could look and decide, or if you needed more time, on what recommendations you would be accepting on the town side. And then the school, as I said, since this is a joint task force, we have recommendations for the schools that they have to vote on, because they still control their energy budget. And so they're paying for their own energy costs. And then, of course, part of it is the $2,000 of the townside budget that we had last year. We were trying to decide how to spend that money, and we did look at the building that seemed to be burning the most energy, which is right now the police station, because it's on all the time, 24/7. And we were thinking of putting money, the $2,000 towards an audit of that building and any equipment that needed to be put in the building to make it more energy efficient. But again, the final decision, all we are is an advisory board. It's up to the Select Board to make the final decision and the votes on those.
Marie, is there a single listing of the recommend, because I, there's-
Oh, on page 16 is the, the town recommendations, and 17 are the ones for the school, and the school will be receiving the same report and deciding what to do.
That's of the task force report.
Yes, of the task force.
So it's not the green, okay, that I, those I saw, I thought the green energy.
That's a data summary.
Okay. Okay. That's what I was looking at. Okay. These I saw.
And what we did as task forces, we analyzed the green community's data summary, and then took the goals, and so we repeated what the goals are for our original agreement, and then we tried to see where we could improve on reaching those goals better, and that's where we came out with the 15-point recommendations. And one of them, I think number 15, Mark, is what you're always talking about, is try to get a SMART goal in there. And it doesn't even mean we'll reach it, but that's what we're trying to go to, which was decrease energy consumption on the town side by 5%. And up till now, I think they've been working hard towards efficiencies throughout the So do you have any questions for the task force?
Well, I, just one question, because, you know, I mean, one is to get energy-efficient equipment and try to reduce our, the demand of how much electricity we're using, but it seems like a lot of energy losses through windows, because they aren't, you know, that's where all the heat goes out, and heat is such an energy sort of consuming process. And, I mean, does your, did your task force talk at all about, you know, either doing stuff for windows in the town, or even having stuff for residents that they could do in their own homes to have better window coverage so there's less heat loss? I know for a while, there was a lot of window quilting going on, and it seems like that's sort of, I've never seen anything now for sale for, for that, and I don't know if that was discussed at all.
We did. I mean, the discussion doesn't go very far when you start looking at dollars. The capital outlay, I mean, if you look at the report, the center school, huge user, which is sort of why we went to the police station, because we thought that might be more manageable with limited funds. Clearly, if you replace windows in schools, you're going to save a lot of money, but the capital outlay, you know, is well beyond the scope of what our work is.
Yeah. But I guess, one of the thing I'm saying is that even if you replace windows, isn't that still the, I mean, windows have only so much insulation, you know? I mean, you could have four panes, and you're still losing a lot of heat.
The R-value is still-
The R-value is still low. And so, you know, alternatives to that have been ways to, you know, I mean, I don't know, do they talk in green communities about things that are a lot more insulated than glass? Because glass is the least, you know, efficient insulator, you know? But so-
Tom, I mean, I, I was in the glass and window business for 35 years.
That's right.
Glass doesn't insulate at all. It's the air between the piece of glass, and, you know, if you can, if you've got the money to install air gap or argon gap or whatever it is, windows, you can make them very, very, very efficient and caulk them. So, you know, and that's part of what, why window quilts have disappeared, because people are putting in efficient windows and they want to keep the light in, coming in, where the window quilt closes your window, and that was great when you had a single-pane window. So the, you know, the 2017 design criteria is get efficient windows and keep the light coming in, because the light and the sun will heat your, heat your building as well. And so, you know, but it's a matter of finances, and it is for the town as well as anybody else, so.
Whether it's center school or anybody else.
But that's kind of to answer your question about the window quilts. It really is a matter of efficiency.
You are a wealth of information.
I did that one.
Thank you.
Marie, I, I just had a question when I read through this, and I guess it's playing the devil's advocate here. One of the things that struck me as I read through this was our, you know, agreement or, you know, move toward single-fuel heating of our buildings with the support subsidy, whatever the number, name you call it, of the, of the gas company. And one of the things I'd like to just warn on and be concerned about is that fuel prices flip, and they can flip, and one of the beauties of a dual-fueled boiler allows the town to be in charge of our own fuel costs. And, you know, we've gone through this period of time where, where, you know, natural gas was so much cheaper than oil, everybody was rushing to get rid of oil burners and put in natural gas. But, you know, we've had a, one winter, a couple winters ago, where it was a little bit questionable, and I'm just not sure we, you know, we want to, you know, be bought off by the gas company. I hate to use that term, because it's, it's pejorative, and I didn't, don't really mean it that way. But, but that, you know, having that dual-fuel capability offers us some flexibility long-term, and I'd like to just caution against rushing to take the best deal that comes along to convert everything to natural gas. And I understand dual-fuel burners are tougher to maintain, and they're tougher for this, and they're tougher for that, but, you know, one of our highest costs in this town is, is heating buildings, and if you can save a few cents here and there on fuel costs, I think we ought to consider it. So when I read through those recommendations, that was one of the ones that kind of, the rest are, look, look really good, but that was one of the things that kind of jumped out at me, is being cautionary about single fuel.
Any other questions for the task force? And Dave Miller's here. He's been a very important part of the task force from the very beginning. One of the things that we did work on for, I would say, months, was trying to deal with the streetlight issue, and trying to get an audit on that, and see where we could do to try to push that project through. And I know that you've spent a lot of time researching the streetlights, too. And unfortunately, as you see, our recommendation is that we just keep trying to push to get a solution out of Boston, because that seems to be where the problems are right now.
Are we pushed, but, you know, my sense is we're waiting for Boston to come to, I mean, you know, have we?
Well, I think it's, I think I forwarded to the board, I think that may be late December or January, we'd received notification from EverSource that they were going to pursue a rate case at the DPU. That would include a tariff for LED streetlights, which they don't presently have. And I think, you know, rate cases, as we learned from Dan Kanabik, you know, in our previous experience, rate cases tend to take a long time to wind their way through the DPU, so we'll, we'll continue to watch that.
But that came and went, I mean, the hearing was in February, I think, or January, wasn't it?
No, that was for the rate case. That was just, no, that was just a rate case for them to increase their rates in, over the board. It was not the tariff case. That I don't think has even had a hearing date. I was told it could take two years or more to get that heard, and, and so I think we were talking about reaching out to the Attorney General's Office, and that's actually what I was, Ms. Chason, who was here before, said she wanted to assist us in that. But I think we do need to be a little more proactive to try to push this problem that I think is a political issue rather than-
Yeah, but it's a potential $200,000 swing for the town, so.
So it's just-
I don't know what it takes to be proactive, to tell you the truth, because I don't know what to do, but, you know, I just feel-
As we learned, it's not within our control. And I think it says the DPU will conduct a review of our rate filings, this is from EverSource, and with public hearings, and will most likely rule by next fall.
Okay.
Okay. But, but-
And that was January 17th.
Yeah. Stephen, not, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but four years ago, it was in our control. And we chose, we said, oh, it's, it's too expensive, we're not going to buy the streetlights. We should have bought them then, because the price is now double what it was four years ago or, or more.
I think it was eight years ago. That's when everyone was buying them.
Or whenever it was. It may have been more than four years ago. You're right. But the point is that, you know, we could choose to buy them, and, and, you know, then go back and try to recoup some of the purchase price later on, but start those, I mean, it's a lot to do, but I got to believe that the amount of money we'd save, you know, makes, you know, and the fact that we can bond that purchase, it behooves us to just take a financial look at whether, even at the ridiculous, exorbitant, overpriced, that EverSource is looking to get from these, there's still a payback for the town. And if there is, isn't it our duty to at least do the economic analysis to find out whether it is or not, based on being to bond it with payments for the bond coming out of the money we now pay for streetlights anyway, so that, you know, the same discussion we had last week is, so that 15 years from now, or whatever it is, somebody's going to thank us for having done it, when the, when that bond gets, gets paid off. And then that's, that's all I'd be looking for, is we ought to do the economic analysis. And the question is, who does that fall to? Does it fall to the Energy Task Force? Does it fall to our overworked town CFO who's sitting here not looking for more work to do, you know? But-
I think what we, correct me, is, if I'm wrong, is that we looked at it and decided the tariff is an important part of this element for us to really save money. We were talking about actually doing the audit ourselves, and really, it was going to be extremely labor-intensive, but we were training ourselves to do it, and then we started to look at the numbers, and without the tariff in there, we're not going to save that much money. We need that tariff piece in there, and, in order to, to really move it along. We did talk about whether we should bring someone in, an independent company, to actually do the audit, because they would do the audit as they would make a recommendation of a sale. But all of this might start rolling faster if we're really looking at a tariff by the fall.
But, but, but who, go ahead.
So to answer the question of who does it fall to, it falls to the town manager in 2015 when it happened, and the board chose at that time to not do anything on it until the tariff issue was resolved. do anything on it until the tariff issue was resolved. Because we had George Woodbury, I mean, and it's been a while, but we did go through all this, spent a lot of hours on it, did the analysis and the board collectively decided to hold off until this broader issue was resolved. And that was the discussion that the Green, that Dan Kanabik, I think he's onto a new job now, but.
Oh, he's not in Green Communities?
I think he's, he's a town administrator in Harwich now.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Oh.
Yeah, he went to the Cape.
Yeah.
So is it Jim Barry?
Yeah, well, Jim Barry's, he's the, he's not the agency head, but he's the one who's been helping us consistently. And, and the feedback from them has been unchanged since we really started this. And I, at least them, at least EverSource noting in their rate case filing that they are going to have a LED tariff as a part of their overall filing is a step in the right direction. It's obviously not fast enough for anybody's taste, but it's a step in the right direction. And obviously, they're going to use that to sell higher rates on everybody else. You know, that's, that's the nature of the beast.
Well, I, I, I hear you, Stephen. I, I think though that, you know, we, we're always asked by our state legislators, what can we do for you? And I truly believe this is a case where the legislation or the legislature can trump the DPUC and, and, and at least circumvent them in terms of some of these things. And, and we've been asked over and over again, what can our legislators do for us? And this is, you know, again, there's a lot of money on, on the table potentially to the town of Long Meadow. And if it takes legislation to allow the, to require the utilities to, to sell them to us at a given, you know, depreciation schedule or to allow a, a, a tariff that's in there for, or allow us to pay for our own lights or something, then maybe that's the approach we ought to take because this is going on, you know, I, I'm frustrated because I've been looking at this off and on for nine years or eight years that I've been on the select board. And it's very, very frustrating to feel, we can't do anything. We've got to wait for the DPUC to, you know, to take their, their sweet old time. And, and it's costing us, you know, between two hundred and four hundred thousand dollars a year. And I, my particular frustration is because we should have done it six or seven years ago.
And there's, there's, there's no way we can take these by eminent domain because there are property in our town.
Oh, you can take them by eminent domain, but you got to pay for them.
Well, right, but.
Or they establish the price you got to pay.
You don't even need eminent domain, Tom.
Huh?
You don't even need eminent domain statute. The towns can buy them by right.
Okay.
But the statute says that the utility sets the price.
Utility set the price.
Well, no, it's the book value. They don't even set the price. You have, you pay book value.
But they set the book value.
Well, they've, they've changed the book value a couple of times. They changed the, you know, a few years ago, they changed the depreciation schedules for people at home. So, you know, streetlights that had a value of a couple hundred thousand dollars, those same streetlights, which were even a year older, went from a couple hundred thousand dollars to four hundred thousand, they doubled in value on the books, just by changing the depreciation schedule. They slowed the depreciation. So, you know, and, and there's nothing to say they couldn't do it again. And, you know, as you get, as these things start depreciating down, they get to where they're, they're affordable, they just change the depreciation schedule and, and now all of a sudden they double in value again and, and on the books. So, that's the problem, is that they've been allowed to change the depreciation schedule.
Well, number thirteen is continue to push EverSource to sell the streetlights in our recommendation. The task force would be glad to come back with some more specific recommendations and how to move forward on that.
David knows I left it.
Yeah, he, he really knows the issue back and forth and maybe we'll sit down and brainstorm on what the next five steps would be to get that pushed forward.
Thank you. Yeah.
So, do you feel comfortable voting on recommendations tonight? Or do you want to push this off to the next meeting?
Well, I just wondered if anybody had, anybody else had any comments about the number three, which is the, that's the, you know, get rid of all the oil burners and.
Number three is begin the process of creating a hybrid electric fleet?
No, my, my recommendation number three says have all the oil burners, tanks and related elements removed or modified.
Oh, so does yours? I must have typed out, printed out the wrong one. Oh, okay.
That, that, like I said, that was the one that I, I'd like some better discussion about that. The rest looked good to me.
So do you want to have a motion to accept all but number three?
How about we refer the recommendations to the town manager for review? And then we can look at them internally and see, you know, what's, and then we can get back to you with what we're already doing, what we think is feasible, what, because we, what we have started the research on eliminating dual fuel and the primary reason is to
It's money.
Save money right now because we have a half a dozen boiler jobs on, either in front of us or on the docket for, for the very near future. And if we can incentivize switching from dual fuel to natural gas to save money today, then maybe something that's worth looking at. We are, we're on the process of doing it. So I don't, I, I think I'd rather have the chance to kind of go through these with our team and evaluate what's, you know, what can we do and what, like I said, and what, what we think would be something that would be, you know, maybe a, not a long-term goal, but something that would need a little more lead time than we have, you know, than just something like, like the GPS units, we've, we've implemented GPS units in most of the DPW vehicles, so that those, that's what we're doing. I mean, so I, I would just say, give us a chance to look at them.
So you'll be able to report back next meeting on the twenty-seventh?
No.
On the sixth? Because we're running into, the reason I'm saying that is we're looking at the budget coming up and.
I didn't see anything in here that was a, like a budgetary item.
Two thousand dollars in the town budget.
Oh, sure. I mean, that's, that's something we were looking at in our budget. That budgetary item, sure. But the other ones, I didn't, I didn't see anything on here that jumped out as a need to do something in one week.
No, it's just I wanted to be able to get, make sure that that's part of the budget.
No, I think we still have it in, in the town manager's.
So you're talking about magic march?
Yeah.
How does the board feel about?
Well, I, I agree. I, I mean, you have to look at what the, the cost of buying and converting to dual as opposed to the savings that, you know, if you have to make a capital investment now, what is, what is the savings? Does it make any sense over some period, the life of the unit? I mean, I think if you're replacing units and they have to be done now, then that's a different decision.
So I, it's, it's a crapshoot. I mean, let's be honest. So Mark is talking about fuel pricing.
Yeah, we don't know.
The money here, saving the money here and now is, has a higher, you know, net present value than trying to forecast fuel pricing.
Or we could have solar as the supplemental fuel that's used to heat the buildings eventually.
Well, I, I gotta tell you, Maria, you know, after reading the reports about this boiler and that boiler and this boiler and that boiler, I'm saying to myself, maybe the New York City model, if you put one massive boiler somewhere in, in, in the area of, of Williams Street and you run steam to all the buildings, it may make some sense. Now, we could never afford to do that, but.
Yeah, the insulation wrapped above ground, steam pipes around, hill and yawn, that'd be great.
Underground, but we've got, you know, a few buildings in the police, town hall and, and and the community house, all in the, the same area. And we're replacing boilers in all of them. Then they're all run pretty inefficiently.
All right, Energy Committee, go for it.
It's not like that happened, but the, the point is that, that, you know,
Yeah.
Do you start, you know, zero-based financing here or engine, energy design here? You know, what would you do if you were starting over with these buildings?
Probably.
Coal stoves, put coal stoves back in.
Tesla batteries, packs attached to everything. How do you feel about waiting till mid-March for a further discussion on that? And we could maybe come back with some recommendation on actual action plan on the streetlights, on who we're contacting.
We'll have the streetlight issue solved by March.
I do want to say one thing about the streetlight issue, notwithstanding Mark's frustration. Because, I mean, virtually every time it comes up, you express your frustration.
I know.
And it's, it's more of an event than a policy, like movement.
Correct.
And, and you know, I feel the same way as you do about it. I, what I do want to say though is when we had then Secretary Kanabik from the Green Communities Office here, one of the things that he, one of the messages that I thought everyone in, everyone in this room should be proud of is that we got their attention. This issue was going nowhere at the state level until we reached out and, and told them what was happening in Long Meadow and told, and described to them the situation with our efforts to purchase the streetlights and EverSource's position on it. And, and that has now moved the needle and with EverSource and their position to the point where they're now making their rate case with the LED tariff. And it got the attention of the state. And I think that's something that now we're still moving at the speed of government at the state level. But we would be even further behind had we not gone, had Long Meadow specifically not gone through that effort and gotten their attention. So that's something I think we, we should all just take a moment and say, hey, it hasn't all been a waste of time, even if it, even if we aren't where we, we should, we think we should be today.
I will invite the task force back when we have it on the agenda. And the town manager will give his report.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for all the work you've done. I'm going to move the town manager report down. Are they here for the town manager report?
No.
Yeah, they're not. Okay. So that we can move to the.
They still work for the town manager. I mean, come on.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to plow through this while I'm still sitting here.
Actually, you know what? Let me do this. Just because he mentioned the boilers and it's, it's a good segue because half of my report is about the boilers.
Okay, you have five minutes.
It's only five minutes. And Richard's not here. I know this is a big thing for him too. But I just want to point out for the board that the boiler issues we're talking about and why we do so many of them is tied to a specific generation of a specific company's boilers. And I don't know if you did Google burn and boiler sections or burn and boiler leaking, but it's.
The weekend, the whole weekend.
Yeah. It's a nationwide problem with this generation of boilers from this specific company. And that's why they're failing much sooner than they should. It's not a lack of maintenance or a lack of attention on our part. It's just, they're, it's just bad equipment that got sold. If, I don't, for about ten years in mid-nineties to mid-two thousands. And so that's why, and I wanted to kind of put that down. I want to thank Dan McCarty, the facilities director, for giving us that information. But that really is, it has to do with the boilers, not, you know, lack of effort or attention on the town side.
Are we getting a group rate?
Well, that's what we're, we're, we're trying.
You can file a class action suit against the former.
Well, someone did, someone did. Well, they still sell burn and boilers and someone has. I don't know what the outcome of that was. But they, but if you, I mean, it really is, it is a substantial problem.
Seriously, if we've got, you know, some of these, the reports say they're twelve years old or fourteen years old, maybe we ought to join that and try to recoup some funding. I mean, is, is that worth having our town council look at? I don't know what's out there. And like you said, if somebody's done it, we ought to get, you know, try to.
There is a class action suit there, but I don't know if it's been, it may have been settled already.
Yeah, I don't, I think Burnham won.
Yeah.
For twelve, that boilers last twelve years?
I, it's only takes time until people will do it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's actually cheaper to replace the boilers and fight that, of course. So anyway, that's, that's the big issue was it's burn and boilers of that generation. And that's, those are the ones we're seeing. Not all of them are, that were installed have the issues, but that's the, Richard's, like, what's the thread that connects all these things? As I said at the last meeting, that is the thread.
Okay. So we'll do the rest of the town manager report.
Mrs. Conver Street is kicking off. We had a kickoff meeting with MassDOT and just, we'll be reporting on that on an ongoing basis, but it's going to be a big project. They didn't get started in March. And that's going to go through the early fall and then they'll do the final paving in the springtime of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, if you're plowing through in the town manager report, we're still going to do it. I do have some questions on town managers' reports. Did you want it now or later?
Later, like?
Later in the evening.
Tomorrow or next week? Sure. No, go ahead.
Okay, great reporting, DPW. What I would have liked to see though is when you talk about completion reports, because there were some completion reports and what was appropriated for the project as well as what was finally spent. That would have been nice to see in the future. And I know that's what Capital's been looking for too.
They've been given that information.
Yeah, but it'd be nice to see it.
On an ongoing basis.
Okay, then I'll just ask you, as each project comes up that you're reporting on, and I'll send an email on what I was looking for this time too. Also, I love the performance measures. We're starting to see more of those between the health department, fire, police, the library, coding for girls. I was very excited to see that. And of course, class was totally full. And I say Parks of Rock and everyone else should be doing. I think the coding is really up and coming.
Your daughter did that.
Your daughter did that? Yeah. It's a really great idea. And then I was very excited to read about the Veterans Agent is now work-study site. I think that is really forward thinking on our vets agent part. And we're not only hiring a vet, but we're going to get a lot more work done. And it's great to become one of the work-study sites in the Commonwealth.
One of the things that for those who are there, our Veterans Agent, Jesus Pereira, has been really aggressive in trying to increase outreach to OIF, OEF, which is basically Afghanistan and Iraq era veterans, which there are in the community. I think our veterans, our veterans circle and our veterans events and a lot of that stuff has been geared more towards older veterans. And he's really trying to help connect younger veterans with the services and benefits that they've earned as well as provide supports to them in the community here. So I, I want to, if you, if you know somebody who is a younger veteran, make sure they get in touch with Jesus. Even if they don't, even if they don't need benefits or don't qualify for benefits, they can certainly, we'd love to have them volunteer and help us, help other veterans, you know, with needs that they may have, so.
Yeah, I've been very impressed with everything he's doing. The town hall, all of that. I thought he really is bringing different generations together and common issues.
Well, in, in building the case, in building the cases that he's dealing with, as we'll see when we do the warrant later, we're, we're looking for an additional appropriation for FY seventeen to cover additional veterans benefit, the town share of additional veterans benefits because of his reaching more people and connecting them, like I said, with the benefits they've earned.
Any other questions on town manager report or comments? Okay. And then we'll move right into the minutes. Is there a motion to approve February sixth, regular meeting minutes?
I'll move, we approve the minutes of February sixth, two thousand and seventeen minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? No corrections? All right. All those in favor?
Maria, can I, how about the January twenty-third minutes that weren't approved last time? And I sent the, because I had some corrections.
We didn't get it in the packet, did we?
But they were in the packet last time and I sent around the notes to everybody at that time.
Do you feel comfortable?
You made some.
They're just minor changes.
Minor changes, yeah.
And does anyone feel comfortable putting a motion on to approve that? Or you want it the next packet? Because there's no rush.
I remember they were fairly minor and I, I'd make a motion to approve those minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Okay. Now let's go right into the warrant articles. We're moving this along quickly because there are so many warrant articles. And so instead of waiting until March and then jamming all those meetings in, I'm trying to do it ahead of time. And you got a second packet that was, I think, put updated and handed out today by Debbie. So the question is, the first four articles, warrant articles on snow and ice removal, the GALT, Goldwaith trustees, bills of prior fiscal years and operation stabilization fund. Is there any questions on those?
Yeah, can I just do a brief introduction?
Sure.
So, one of the things in approaching this agenda item, one of the things that, that Marie really wanted to do and I agree with was given the volume and, and weight of some of the articles we're putting forward, we wanted to give ourselves plenty of time without having a week, a week's worth of, you know, four consecutive, five hour meetings on the budget and get through some of these. So, the ones that were in the packet that were highlighted really reflect either items that are pro forma, Goldwaith trusts, the vending machines for high school, those types of annual things, or CPA articles that are, we've learned, must be put on the warrants. And then other things that are, we would look at as, I don't want to say housekeeping, but things that may be changes in law, like the OPEB, the OPEB trust fund is a, is a change in law that we need to re-accept to keep doing what we're doing. Similar with the MGM money. So I just wanted, so those are basically the ones that we highlighted as ones that we can open the warrant, put these on and dispatch with them so we don't have to take up time in a future meeting since they're somewhat, I guess, they should be non-controversial.
Well, also we wanted to break up the discussion too, because some of them are going to require a lot more discussion.
Correct.
So.
Can you break up the discussion here or on town meeting floor?
No, here.
No.
Yeah, be different meetings.
I don't think we should even need to discuss.
Space it out. But the, the only other one that would merit some discussion, or not the only one, the ones, but some of them that would merit discussion is Capital. We put those on tonight as well because Capital Planning is representative recommendation. I have Mario and Dan here to answer more detailed questions. And if the board's satisfied with the capital plan is presented, that can be put to bed as well.
With the, with the possible change that last year we ended up using capital appropriation to balance the budget. And so.
Correct.
You know, I, I wouldn't want to lock. You know, I, I wouldn't want to lock ourselves into a capital if, in fact, we may need to do that. I don't want to, didn't want to do it last year, but we did it, so...
Until the warrant is posted, you can change it any way you want.
Right, but, but that's my only caveat, Steve.
Okay, sure, good point.
There's, there's a couple of big chunks in there, the supplemental paving and a couple of other things that, that make a convenient place to take money if you need it to keep from laying off employees.
Okay, so for the first four, are there any questions or concerns on the first four warrant articles? No, okay.
Do they even change much from last year? I mean, they're pretty much standard.
The amounts...
I have X's.
X's, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, some of the stuff gets, gets refined, Tom, and, because this is the first time we've done it this way, and I do, and I do want to commend Marie on taking a different approach to be more efficient with our time, so we can spend the time we need to spend on the, on the ones that are, are, that need more time.
Yeah.
But a lot of these have X's until close to when they go to the publisher. But we know there's going to be a warrant article that says we need to do X for snow and ice.
Yeah.
We just fill, and sometimes we don't know until we get closer to town meeting what that number is, and so it goes out, you know, or taking other actions relative there, too. Sometimes we met, we, the actual number isn't known until the motion is made at town meetings. Chapter ninety, a few years back, was that way because of issues with the state budget, so... But they did approve a warrant article with a placeholder number, and that's what we're really seeking to do tonight.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know, I don't know administratively if we need a motion to open the warrant first, or are we just gonna kind of...
We're just discussing these things.
We're just discussing them, there's, there's no concern...
Because they have no dollar amounts or not.
We're not gonna actually vote on them, but...
Oh, I thought we were gonna...
No.
This is an outline.
Because until we get the numbers in there, but what I'm hoping to, what I'm hoping to do is that we clear out any questions or problems, and then as we put in the final numbers in there, we won't all of a sudden get stuck on, we need to rewrite these, and that's why I asked you to have them actually written. So there's no problems or concerns with one through four?
No, or five. Five is just a placeholder.
Well, yeah, but...
Five is a placeholder for the town budget. We don't know what the numbers are, so what are we gonna discuss it with?
So capital projects, I think we're definitely gonna discuss it, because this was the recommendation, the capital planning and the town manager came forward on. As you said, there could be changes on these when we have to make adjustments in the budget. Were there any concerns in regards to the Capitol plan?
Marie, where, the Capitol plan is, is what, is Article six?
Mm-hmm. Those were the numbers that were punched in. I mean, sometimes, some, you, you discover little, what do you call it? Corrections or errors, and I just want to make sure it looks okay, and when we finally have settled with the budget, we'll just be able to fly through these.
Paul Pesterzic, this, this is, this budget is based on your reporting of what, how much money will be in the capital stabilization fund at town meeting time. Is that correct? Based on what's in there now, what's being appropriated this year, and what's turned back?
What is appropriated, what was appropriated supplementary last fall?
Right.
And, but it also has amount of usage of free cash that there was some discrepancy between what the town manager had submitted and what the Capitol Planning Committee had submitted. So there is a usage of free cash right now in that, in that budget of one hundred and twenty, one hundred and five thousand dollars.
And want to explain why?
Explain why? I, I think it had to come from somewhere.
Okay, but you're...
They recommended one hundred and five thousand dollars more than the capital policy of two point seven five percent.
Okay, all right, and, and you, as the town manager, that was your recommendation also?
I had recommended, well, actually, I didn't recommend to the number, and neither did they. We, we changed our approach to just prioritize the, and rank the projects, which we did, and then they did their own ranking, which were, they were similar, but it really, and the reason why we ranked it this year, instead of past years, where we've kind of made like the whole pie approach, was that if we are one hundred and five thousand dollars short, you can either supplement the free cash or just cut a project. And that's where we have DPW here tonight to kind of answer all these questions, and that's, I mean, I know, I, I actually thought we were gonna be voting on some of these tonight, so we wouldn't have to have the open possibility that they'd have to come back.
Well, the only concern is, we, we can't really vote completely on this, because there's, could be very, there could be changes. I'm seeing if everyone's satisfied with the way it is now, and there's no complaints moving forward.
I guess I'll, I'll express my concern that we're using one hundred and five thousand dollars of free cash. This is, that's above the two point, what, four, five, two point five percent that we've already put into the Capitol?
It's actually closer to one point eight. The amount for FY eighteen...
The two point seven five percent was one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, and there was about a hundred and thirty thousand left in the capital stabilization fund. Everything else would be water and sewer-related.
Is it a coincidence that the one oh five is the IT project that came in at the last minute?
It's not necessarily coinci, well, it's just, it is a coincidence that that was the amount, that best matched the amount that I needed from free cash, yes.
No, that's not, that didn't come in at the last minute.
Yeah, it was not in the original five-year plan, and he, he had to come in and make a presentation to Capitol.
But not the last, I mean, it was a part of the five-year plan, but he, he did submit within the deadline.
Right, and it was part of their, their recommendation. The, the thing that the Capitol Planning Committee did not recommend was the project for the DPW Shady Knoll drainage improvement, that was not on the Capitol Planning Committee's list. And the town manager did not have the amount for the fire truck, nor did he have on his list the project development. I think it was just an assumption on his part, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen, it was just an assumption on his part that those would be included.
Yeah, it was, the lack of them being included was really oversight.
Now, these servers, are they located in the high school, the police department, town?
I believe, I believe it's the main server at the, at the high school, which services...
The main server at the high school?
Right, which services numerous buildings.
Including the town.
But didn't we just get these when they built the high school? Didn't they put new servers in? I mean...
I, I, again, it's, it's a virtualized server thing. I'd have to, in fact, I think I had asked last time if we wanted Nick George to be here to explain it. I would have to invite him, because I can't explain it.
Because you can, all right, all right.
He explained it to the Capitol Planning Committee, and he explained it to me, and his explanation was clear enough to me that I said, you're right, this is something I should recommend, so I recommend the Capitol Planning Committee. He explained it to them, and they're, and the recommendation was sufficient to get them to recommend it to you.
And I believe it was off-site, isn't it?
So, yeah, I happen to be at that meeting.
Yeah, I was, too.
And I'm not gonna do a very good job explaining what this is, but as I remember it, it, should we lose the service in this building? This other building will automatically kick in, the town won't lose service. I don't know where it is, and I don't know any of the details other than it's a backup.
Yeah, I thought it was East Long Meadow, too.
This is just an upgrade power backup.
Yeah, it's not just power.
It's, it's the switching system that switches it over to the backup.
It's a whole backup system.
Yeah.
So it's sort of like when we have to take our hard drives out of the office in case there's a disaster at the office. I think it's an off-site.
This place goes down, that place automatically triggers, you wouldn't even know that it's where your information is coming from.
But if, if the power goes down, I mean, people in the school would probably go home anyways, I mean...
Yeah, but it's not, it's not power. It's, if there's a, something that crashes this, this system...
Yeah.
It's emergency management of your data.
Right, your data is secure and accessible somewhere else. If there's a fire in the server, for example, and it's retained in the server, you know, instead of being dead in the water and never have, your information is somewhere else, and the switches flip over, and they replace these servers, and you're still up and running, that's the kind of disaster that this goes after. It's not, you know, it's not a power failure.
It's not a power failure, okay.
Power failure, you go home.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's not a big deal. The key is a server disaster is what this is back for.
That's how I remember it, Ken.
Okay, all right, that would make more sense. The other thing I had, just a question, are these guardrails, where, just where are those gonna be replaced? Is that...
Are you talking about the existing bid or the, the future?
It says, you know, it just says guardrails, you know, fifty thousand dollars.
Three or four locations.
Yeah, I'd have to look up the list for you.
Do we get information on those ones?
We, we appropriate that annually.
Oh, that's annual, okay, and you just, because there's always, yeah.
And it's a needs metric that we use to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Maria, I, I, again, I, you know, this is kind of like, we couldn't decide, so we decided to go over our budget by a hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred and five thousand dollars. I, my preference would be to stay within the budget that, that was established, and, and I know we took money out of it last year, which isn't really fair, but, but a hundred thousand dollars out of free cash is a hundred thousand dollars out of free cash. And, and I didn't go through the projects, I don't know what we would cut out of this, but if forced into the task, I'm sure we, we or I could, could, could come up with it, or actually, you go back to the Capitol Planning Commission, and they, committee, they listed and prioritized them, and, and we could just take their already prioritized list.
Their, their last two rankings, the last ranking that they have is for the Glenbrook Boiler, sixty-five thousand, one hundred. And number fifteen is the guardrail replacement at fifty thousand dollars.
Now, you also added, you said Shady Knoll.
I added Shady Knoll. I didn't, I didn't see it on, on their, on their listing. I mean, that could come off, by all means. But I did see it on Stevens', so I didn't have an idea of where the Capitol Planning Committee stood. It happened to be the last one on the list, and whether they just forgot about it, I didn't know. But you're right, that one is not on their, on their list.
And is Shady Knoll, is that the issue near you, Mark, that you're concerned about?
No, it's not.
That's not Shady Knoll.
No, that's not Shady Knoll.
You want to give us a little background on Shady Knoll?
I think Shady Knoll was pushed back a year, correctly. I believe that is a sewer main replacement.
It says drainage.
Yeah, I mean, if it's sewer, that's very different.
No, 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 forgive me, it is not sewer, it is a storm drain. Culver, probably. I'd have to look it up for you, but I think it was pushed back to eighteen, fiscal year eighteen.
Okay.
So, so, so that, that's the magic number we can push off a year?
Yes.
There you go.
Then I think that's why it's not part of this.
Okay. Then that actually would take care of, of the amount available.
Well, the only thing good about Shady Knoll is it is a hill, and so the water is going to leave the stream, but it's just where it's gonna end up.
The way you don't want it to.
You know, yeah.
And so the town man, Stephen, was there a reason you felt you really needed to push that in?
But this is the FY eighteen... You're saying it's pushed off the calendar FY eighteen?
Right.
As opposed to the fiscal, okay.
Fiscal year nineteen.
Thank you, okay.
Was there a reason you felt it needed to be on there, Stephen?
I mean, I wanted to, I didn't want to do no drainage projects. I think drainage is something that we've talked, especially through going to a stormwater utility process, we identified the needs to really stay on top of our drainage and how we manage our stormwater versus guardrail, you know, Glenbrook Boiler piping, and that's, that's a project that has kind of evolved over time a little bit. We've looked at it a few different ways. But again, I think they are, they aren't, none of the ones we're talking about right now were tops of the list.
In fact, they never made cap-
And that's why we ranked them. We ranked them, so if the money was X, then you cut off everything below X. That's why we did that.
But this never made the ranking, because it never got to Capitol for some reason?
No, it didn't.
Oh, it did?
It did?
Shady Knoll's in there, yeah.
It was part of that presentation?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
But Mario, you said that if we're, if we're really not going to be doing it in, in the next eleven to twelve months, why are we gonna fund it and just tie up the money in?
Agreed.
So I, I'd love to see...
Again, if I take that off, I would move the hundred and five up to raise and appropriate, and it would be zero coming out of free cash.
Sounds good to me.
Stephen, you're working on the rest of the budget. Does that mess you up in any way?
No.
It doesn't change the budget at all.
Okay, all right. So...
So we're gonna just delete the Shady Knoll?
Anything, any other changes on the Capitol plan or concerns or questions?
Again, Marie, I just like to leave this as a, as a, as a strong placeholder, because, you know, if we need twenty-two thousand dollars to balance the budget, I can see us coming back and saying pavement's gonna be twenty-two thousand less, or sidewalks and pavement each take eleven thousand dollars to hit, or something like that.
But if the town manager doesn't make that recommendation, everyone's satisfied with everything else on this list to go forward?
What is the project development, just to...
So, so, Bill, that, that's always been so that they can get a better estimate of the price of, of these projects and literally get a running start, so that you don't start project development the day after town meeting, and you can actually get the project going so that you can implement them during the summer. Is that correct? So...
And sometimes stuff comes up during the year that you just, you know, you don't, you know, if it's, if it's in the operating, we had this discussion, if it's in the operating budget, it could end up getting spent on something else, and then it's, so we want to make sure it's money reserved specifically to help the development of the Capitol plan for architects, engineers, you know, specialists.
And ultimately, the money spent in that line item isn't spent on the project line item, and then comes back into the Capitol's budget, because it's not spent, you know, in other words, if you do project development on the fire alarm replacement at Center School, that one gets underspent by that much amount of money that you don't spend on that project. You're just spending it earlier, so. It really financially is a wash, as far as I can see. Right, right?
Yeah, it intended it, so.
I know you've told me numerous times, I'm just gonna ask you to tell me again. The leases are coming out of the operational, so we're not gonna see any lease costs coming out of Capitol here.
That's correct.
And there was nothing you recommended in the way of leases this year in regards to moving things off?
No.
Okay.
There are leases in my operating budget.
Right, but you're, we're looking to expand that this year.
There might be two in FY eighteen submittal.
Okay.
We're going from one to two.
Can I, and that was, that comment was made by the Capitol Planning Committee? That's incorrect.
What's incorrect?
That we had leasing in the Capitol budget.
Oh, no, it's not, I just wanted to, I, I didn't think it was, I just wanted to make sure.
What we did the first year was to sh-
So I wasn't commenting on the Capitol plan's comments.
What we did the first year was to show, we kind of had the leasing in the Capitol plan, but not a part of the Capitol budget, because we wanted to show that we were following through on the suggestion of doing leasing, and that was the place to show it, because we're replacing a purchased vehicle with a leased vehicle, which we continue to do to this day. Some members of the Capitol Planning Committee believe that we were carrying that money in the Capitol plan, and we...
Oh, no, I wasn't expecting that. I just wanted to make sure I understood where things were.
Well, see, now, this is a first, you know, review of all these sections. Do we really need to cut off a project, you know, a sewage, a drainage project at this point, or is it something we can come back to?
Well, it's something we probably could come back to when you come in with your final budget, right? And if you come in with your final budget and we see where everything's going, Tom's concerned about us just taking off and leaving three, a hundred thousand dollars in free cash, instead of putting a drainage project.
At this point, we haven't even gone through all the different articles.
So, the point of this discussion tonight is, do you have any questions specifically about the projects? So when we go to do the warrant article, it's not, well, you know, what's that? These guys are here tonight, they can answer all the questions. When the town manager's budget is finalized and submitted, if a change is needed to these items, or is recommended to these items to balance the budget, I will certainly notify the board as a part of my budget message that the Capitol has adjusted this way, or I'll, you know, report to the board somehow. At this point, we don't see that necessarily as, as needing to happen, based on our current projections, but the point of tonight is, do you have any questions about the project? So when it comes time, you can say, yeah, I understand all these because of this session tonight, so we can just go ahead and vote on them.
So, well, but in terms of this project, then, in terms of the, the, the way we're looking at wastewater, you know, in meeting state reg, and federal regulations...
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Would we do anything different with this project a year from now than we'd be doing now?
I, I don't know.
No, and forgive me, because I honestly, I briefed myself on the recommended list at Capitol Planning, and I, this was obviously cut off, so... It's my opinion that it's not going to fall apart to the point where we're gonna have serious problems over the next year, so this one was kicked down the road, so to speak. So, will, will it be different next year? Probably not.
Okay.
Marie, I, I, Tom, I guess my concern, though, is that as part of our overall budget plan, we put together a plan that said, you know, over a multi-year period of time, we would like to spend so much money on Capitol, okay? And I was in a position many years ago as Capitol Planning Chair, where that number was literally an eighth of what it is now. I mean, it was not, you know, very, very challenging, and yet we found a way to do it. And so I'd like to ask that, that we as a board, and, and certainly, you know, as the town, stay within that budget. And what we have here is first pass, and this goes to the Shady Knoll project, or whatever project... And what we have here is first pass, and this goes to the shady Noel project, or whatever project, it's not shady Noel project so much as it's a hundred and five thousand dollars. It's above that budget. And, and if we're just going to say, look, you know, we're going to spend every dime we have, we're going to spend all our free cash, whatever it is, that removes the discipline we tried to bring to the capital planning process, which is there's a budget, prioritize what you, you can, work within the budget. I, what I heard tonight was, we can do that. And so, and we, we can do that based on the best recommendations of the DPW. And I'd like to work within that budget, as opposed to state come back and say, well, let's stay with this over-budget, you know, proposal only because it's early in the process. I think even though it's early in the process, we ought to stay within our plan, and our plan is a hundred and five thousand dollars less than what this very basic initial draft was. That's, that was my only point.
Okay, so, we got to move on?
Yeah, and, yeah, we'll be able to talk about the details more when you come in with your final big budget, too. So, were there any questions for the capital plan?
Yeah, I, I do, and I, again, I, I will confess, I was probably the initial culprit of doing this, but it's the multi-fund approach to vehicles. And at some point, we've got to make sure that we're doing right by the, the enterprise funds, particularly the water and sewer enterprise funds, that they really ought to be paying a portion of, of the fee. This all started, if you go back, it started with, with dump trucks that we used in the water department, because we used them when we fixed the water mains, and we used them when we fixed sewer mains. And then it expanded to this, and expanded to that. And I look at some of this stuff and saying, can we really justify that these are truly, ought to be paid fifty percent out of enterprise funds? And I'm, I'm not necessarily arguing the percentage, because, you know, it's a flip a coin, the percentage. It's in fact, ought enterprise funds be paying for these capital improvements, whereas it's just a nice source of alternate funding that nobody needs to question because it's coming out of everybody's water and sewer bills. And so, I, you know, it's something that's really gotten to be pervasive, and I'd like it to take a good look at it, that's all.
Well, I think I, actually, you were one who converted me. I mean, when you sat down and you look about what it really costs to run the water projects, you require a percentage of the employees, a percentage of the equipment. Where that percentage break down, we pout on our magical CFO to figure out where the percentages lie.
But, but it's got to be equipment that you use in water and sewer projects, you know, and that's, that's my question all the time. I have no idea whether a vibratory roller helps repair water mains.
It's the patch that goes on top of the water main.
There are plenty of vehicles, Mark, well, first of all, let me say this, it's done this way everywhere. Industry standard, and the percentages are based on best practices, you know, this, every municipality does it this way, that has, that runs their own, and or that has enterprise funds. There are plenty of vehicles that get proposed for replacement or new purchases that are just only general fund. Dan McCarthy's new vehicle, the facilities director's new vehicle, was a hundred percent general fund. No money out of a water and sewer utility, because he does no work with the water and sewer enterprise funds. Mario does some work with the enterprise fund, so potentially, his vehicle could have been partially offset. Pete Thurber is exclusively in the water and sewer fund, so his vehicle was water and sewer. There are certain vehicles, loaders, dump trucks, things like that, that are used. And if you go back and look at the history of, of the cost shares, the vehicles that have been proposed for cost shares are replacing vehicles that they could, that they could, as I quantify, we don't really collect that level of data. But anecdotally, no, this goes out when we have a water main break, or this goes out for, you know, this particular call, or something like that, you know? So, I think it's, we do monitor that, and we do, we don't propose enterprise fund contributions for vehicles that are not related to enterprise fund. Anything is the auditors, you know, would pick right up on that and, and call us out. But this is something that virtually every municipality that has enterprise funds does it that way.
Right, and so, when we get our budget reviewed by the state, like we got that award to our budget, these are the kinds of things they look at also, don't they?
State doesn't look at this, though.
They don't care?
The only one who looks at it is our auditors.
No, the GFOA doesn't look at whether or not we're using enterprise funds to purchase vehicles. What they look at is, how are we telling the community, or, or, you know, what reasons are we giving the community in our narrative about it, and we do.
Okay, okay, so. All right.
Actually, I have a question, I was going back to figuring out what I was going to ask and further questions. The Raspberry Brook Long Meadow Street, it says a capital project request was submitted for this, and where is that?
That didn't make the cut either, that was also an eighteen request that will end up being a nineteen request.
Well, does that mean we don't get the funds from EMA?
There is a five-year shelf life to that, and we write a quarterly report, kind of telling them where we are in the process. So, last week, we said, we submitted, we're waiting for approval, and then, you know, next quarter, we'll obviously update. So, we didn't get the money, we're going to try again next year. And so, that's kind of how that goes, but I think it, after the five-year sunsets, if you haven't taken advantage of it, you lose it.
I mean, it's a significant, it's a significant con, even though we got a grant.
Right, that's what I was.
It's a substantial contribution on behalf of the town, and potentially larger, as we get into it, is that it could be a bigger, the grant's not going up, and the town's contribution could grow, and one of the things we've tried, it, it's right along Long Meadow Street, for those who don't know Raspberry Brook, is it's right down, right before you head up the hill towards the light at Mass Ave. One of the things we're looking at is, of course, we talked about the TIP project for Long Meadow Street that we're looking at for 2020. Could we tie this together with that, and, you know, have, not spend money on repairing this and patching the road and all that other stuff, and come along and have other? So, that, we decided to push this off until we have better information on the Long Meadow Street project.
All right, it's not as if it's going to cost us more by putting it off?
No, well, only, only construction escalations, but that's going to happen anyway.
But the benefit is, if TIP will pick up some of this, then there's savings.
Right.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Any other questions or concerns on the capital plan?
So, can I make one comment about it, about the vibratory roller? And I just want to connect two things.
Of course, what do you, when you're winning, do you, do you really want to, you know, the lawyers always said, don't.
Don't over.
Don't oversell it, okay?
No, it's, it's just.
You just, we're going to have total approval until you opened up and started discussing further.
And I, and I do appreciate that, I, I do appreciate this for the board, but one of the things I just want to know, because you talked about completion reports.
Yes.
And this is another thing, and maybe I'm on a kick tonight of self-congratulations, but we don't spend a lot of time talking about things that we do in previous years' plans and the impact. I just want to point out for the board, and anybody who's maybe watching at home, and commend the DPW, the vibratory roller is a kind of a, a new piece of equipment to our inventory, that's something that our team says we can do different and better with this piece of equipment. The hot box asphalt recliner that we did last year was something we talked about in the exact same vein as the vibratory roller. And if you noticed one thing about driving around this winter, you didn't hear that click, 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 click sound of driving through a pothole filled with coal patch, you know, and then, two hours later, drive through and it being a pothole again. We were able to use hot mix to fill potholes, and you probably didn't notice what a big difference it made in the potholes in the town, which is exactly how that's supposed to work. So, I just wanted to commend the DPW and show that we're getting real results when we try new and different things from our capital expenditures.
I will say, I noticed today, potholes were filled in the last forty-eight hours.
Yes, they, the warm weather has changed our.
And I can tell you where they were. Long, Long Meadow Street.
But the asphalt plants aren't open yet, I don't think.
We're making our own.
Yeah, we're making our own, and it's made a big difference. So, that's all, I just wanted to do a quick.
It is making a difference, this one on Long Meadow Street, it was great.
Now, even though I'm not voting on it, I'm now, I'm not setting us up for a fight later, right? Everyone has their questions answered, okay? All right, so let's move on to, any questions for them? Should we move on to any specific, any more capital? Any more capital issues on the rest of these warrants, so I don't just keep them here? Do we have any questions for them, should we go down, you, you follow the CPC at all?
Stick around for Dwight.
The community preservation, I, I presented five there, I think three, two or three were approved. I have limited knowledge, I can try to answer them if you have.
The point is, Maria, we don't have a whole lot to say on the CPCs.
I know, so, if they had any questions, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to keep you guys here if there are any questions. So, any questions or problems on the CPC projects?
That's why we get the opinion.
No?
If, if you have any questions, maybe email me or Mario, or both, to see if you have any specific questions. But they, you know, I think Steve Metz was, no, Steve wasn't here, it was.
He wasn't, no, he wasn't there.
Arlene was here, and, you know, I think they did a good job vetting the projects and asked a lot of detailed questions. Maria, you were at one of the meetings, that I was at as well, so. You know, as we noted, those go on the warrant, but if people have questions, you can certainly email or call me.
Okay, so there's, it is, as was stated, we really can't say too much about the CPC, other than we need to put them on the warrant. Moving down to bylaw amendment on water and sewer non-payment, since you guys are here, that's something we had voted on earlier in the fall to correct a problem we had seen on fall town meeting. Is there any question or problem with number thirty?
I was just saying, skipped over a whole bunch.
Well, I'm jumping because they're here, I don't want to keep them here for the discussion on all the others.
Right, well, non-payment doesn't have a whole lot to do with Mario.
No.
Other than it's water and sewer.
No.
So, you guys satisfied with that one and the way it was written?
Well, he's going to stay here anyway, so you might as well.
Oh, yes?
Paul's going to stay here anyway, because he's got the annual investment report, so you might as well just go through them in order.
All right, so, go, jump up to chapter ninety, any question or problems with number seven? And that's pretty.
There's not enough money, it's the state's issue.
Didn't we get more this year?
You'll see it if you get it.
They, they increased it slightly, but then they re, they regressed in the following year.
No, okay, and when do we hear the final numbers this year, is it going to be March or April?
That usually comes in March or early, April.
Right, but I think the number's pretty similar to the last.
Yeah, two, two hundred million, which, which would be the same amount as the current amount.
It will be four hundred and change, yeah, four, four hundred and change will go in there, and then, by the time we make the motion at the meeting, we'll have the final number.
Okay, school vending machines, number eight, any question or problems on that warrant article?
I, I just have a question, Deb, did this actually come from the school department, or was this just a copy?
You, you definitely are.
Because they, they actually may not need this.
Oh, okay.
With their vending machines.
Thank you.
Because they no longer run the same kind of.
Right, so, well, I'll, I'll check with Tom Mazza if this is, if this needs to be repeated or not, otherwise it might be deleted.
All right, so, moving down to number twenty-five, re-acceptance of the OPEP trust fund.
What, what happened to nine, ten, eleven?
No, we're only going through the highlighted ones, because the other ones are going to be dealt with on the twenty-seventh. So, we're splitting up the warrants that we're reviewing. And so, we went through the CPC, and again, we just have to put them on, but if you had any questions specifically about the ones that were DPWs, he was here. Paul, do you want to explain the re-acceptance of the OPEP trust fund, why that is on?
Sure, the, the OPEP trust fund before that was allowed under thirty-two B, section twenty, had been deemed no more than a reserve fund for retiree health insurance. And to be a true trust fund, there's innumerable other aspects of that, and the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act addressed that through all his amendments to that act. And basically, what it requires is that if the town had accepted the old, it could still live by the old measures of, of that section of the law, thirty-two B, section twenty. But if it truly wanted a trust fund that would be compliant with IRS regulations, and compliant with government accounting standards boards, then the communities must accept the, the, the new chapter twenty of, sorry, chapter thirty-two B, section twenty. And what, the, the advantage of doing that for the town of Long Meadow, it gives us greater investment opportunities that we would now be able to go out and, instead of having a portfolio of CDs earning one percent, we could actually have a, either professionals internally manage the funds, we could technically ship it out to a, a third-party wealth management type of outfit, or even give it to the state retirement system to invest it for us. But it will give us that, instead of, again, earning that one, one point two five percent, we'll now be able to look at something a little bit greater and have a true trust fund in place. We'd have to come up with certain documents, so on and so forth, to make all this happen, but this would be the first step in doing that.
So, Paul, Paul, to cut to the chase here, this would mean that we can't invade it like we do now? Like we can now?
Correct.
Right now, the town meeting can.
Right, right now, it's a simple reserve fund.
We put the money in, the town meeting can take the money.
Right, we would not be able to do that, because we would have, we would have trust articles written up, and it, it exactly accomplishes that, too. It would have to be used for retiree health insurance or other retiree benefits.
And my understanding is that I, we had spoken to someone several years ago at the MMA, and they said, unless you have a true trust fund, you really can't negotiate that in regards to contracts. And so, the only times they've been able to discuss that in negotiations is if you had a real trust fund set up, and we didn't. We had something that could be raided. It was no, it was not a lockbox.
Not only could we, but we did, I believe.
No, we did not touch this one, we, at one time, there was a.
Oh, it was a medical plan.
It was a medical one, but we never touched this, we only put money in and never have taken money out of this trust fund.
Yeah, the medical was taken away for drainage projects, yeah. Any questions or concerns in regards to the OPEP trust fund?
Well, I, I, I'm convinced it's going to need a little bit more explanation, but I don't know how you, how we do that.
Well, I, I mean, I think as I said before, I think Paul said this, I got to give Dan the energy committee recommendations to get him started. It really is a change in law, it recodifies a practice that we're already doing, and it enhances our ability to do it in a more, quote, official way. And so, you're right, it really is, it doesn't really change much of what we're doing in practice, it's just, you know, like you said, Mark, it changes how we, the, the funds can be treated in the future and makes it a true trust fund versus what we have now. And obviously, if it was in the municipal modernization act, it was obviously something that most communities were doing it the way we're doing it currently, and they made this change to really shore up those contributions for.
Well, no, it, it was extremely burdensome to otherwise make it a real trust fund.
Right.
The municipal modernization act made it less burdensome to turn it into a real trust, I believe, I thought that was the whole point of it.
Well, it, it made it less burden, it outlined a lot more things that had to be done in, in the follow-through. And it, it actually strengthens what our original intent was.
And does Moody like it better, if we're a true trust fund?
I would have to say yes, because again, it's now going to be earmarked for specifically what it says it's earmarked for, and that's, you know, post-employment benefits, as opposed to prior, if we do not accept it, again, we'd have the opportunity to raid it for any, any municipal purpose by town meeting vote.
So, so one of the things I can see coming up is a, a discussion over, at town meeting, over, so how do we make sure it's, it's protected and doesn't get invested in the stock market, and when it drops ten thousand points, we lose all our money? And, and so, is there some way that we can set up some kind of provision when we create this that management is under our finance committee, or under our audit, you know, or something like that, so that there's some guidance, somebody's providing guidance on all the options, Paul, you spoke about?
I think that's select board policy, we could do through a policy recommendations.
You, you, you do have an investment policy, which, which specifically right now does not have anything, I believe, mentioned for trust funds.
That's right.
So, we could write that policy, this actually does require that a committee be formed. I forget of how many exactly, maybe five? And that committee could, you know, be the first ones to try to write that policy for trust funds and have it approved by this group. In the absence of that, like I said, if you were, if you were going to an outside management firm, wealth management firm, you'd be able to dictate if you want a conservative, or if you wanted aggressive type of portfolio, and you would, you know, take it in that fashion. So, you'd have some control of what type of portfolio you would actually be utilizing.
But, and even if you did it through the state retirement plan, they have, now they have it set up so they will make changes to your portfolio, you know, as, as you go along.
Yeah, I, I believe you would set up the type of aggressiveness that you want, if you wanted a conservative plan, something, you know, mediocre, moderate, or something very aggressive.
No, but I think they even have ones where they, they, because I, I had that act myself, where they, they look at, you know, every month, they look at where you're at and say, well, you know, if you want to switch from this to that, and.
Right.
So, I guess that would be something we should look into, because.
But again, you'd also have a committee set up, that we was appointed by, by the selectmen, that would be the initial managers, and whether they utilize the, the, the state system, they're the ones that will be communicating back and forth.
So, what is the name of that committee that we have set up?
Uh.
Probably an investment policy.
No, it's, it's probably in the statute here somewhere.
So, we probably have to set that up right after town meeting if that gets approved, the end of May. And it's not part of the finance committee, you're talking about a whole separate new committee that's just.
I'm talking about a whole separate committee that is in charge of the investment of the OPEP money.
When this becomes twenty-five or thirty million dollars, you're going to want to actively manage your fund, today, you know?
Well, if you manage your fund, you get up to that amount.
I don't know how you manage your fund, but.
Well, there's people in town who do that.
Not starting with what we got in there.
Well, I think that, you know, at the start, you can certainly, you know, take some more, try and get a line on some horses or something like that, take a little more risk to build it up to that 30 million, and then you can get conservative and, you know, let the money do the work.
Go to the MGM casino, put it all on one number.
We could, we could play some Keno.
Says the government body of the body shall designate a trustee or board of trustees without the general supervision of the management, investment, and reinvestment of the OPEB fund.
Your Goldwaith Trust for the.
Board of Trustees, okay.
Sounds the same thing.
Okay. All right, any concerns or problems with warrant article 25? You said you wanted maybe a better explanation, a more extensive explanation, Mark? So, if you could just look at that again and see if there's anything else you would add to that and bring it back to us when we make the final vote? Because I'm hoping to just shoot through these when we come back the second time around.
If people have suggestions on how it could be clearer, let us know.
Okay, what about the intermunicipal agreement for paratransit? Tell us what that is. That's number 26.
This is a placeholder for right now. They're having a hearing, a public hearing, I think next week. PVTA is, this is something I've been reporting on, I think, for a few months. The East Long Meadow, Hampden, and Long Meadow are looking to join together through an intermunicipal agreement.
Thank you.
Thanks. To basically take over the senior ride program for PVTA. It's a pilot project that the PVTA wants to do with those three, with these three towns, to basically delegate the senior ride program at the local level. East Long Meadow Adult Center has a pretty advanced transportation program. They run a two-town trolley currently, and so they're well-suited to be able to take this on, take this pilot project on and provide the leadership. Our financial obligation and our risk is very, very low, and it could be an improvement of services. As Mark knows, PVTA is going through their internal process and having a public hearing to talk about this program. Intermunicipal agreements require a town meeting vote. And so, we have a substantially drafted agreement, I think I did send that to the board in a previous packet. It hasn't changed since that time and probably won't until after the hearing, but this is just a placeholder, because if, after the public hearing, PVTA says this is something they wanna do, we're gonna need a, I don't, I wanna avoid having to try and call a special town meeting for this, and I know they don't wanna start the program before we would have our Fall Town Meeting. So, this is one that may be kinda close to the deadline for publishing, but I just want the board to know it's there. And like I said, if, the agreement as it stands today was in a packet a couple of weeks ago.
Could you resend that to us, so we see it again? And when did you say the public meeting is?
I think it's Monday.
Okay, so afterwards, maybe send it to us again, so we'll.
It's probably not gonna change much as a result of the public hearing, but.
What did you think, Mark?
The point is, is.
Mark is our PV, he's our liaison.
It's Monday.
The town, the town risks a substantial degradation in paratransit service, which is, the acronym is Dial Ride for seniors. And without this pilot program that Stephen indicated, and I think it's something we really need to do, it's, it's as low a risk as you can get. And so, you know, I think it's something we're gonna, we're gonna support, and I think we can see the town supporting it, it's just a matter of getting the wording done.
Okay. So, just reset it so everyone can.
It's the 3:30 at Greenwood, the public hearing.
Okay.
On Monday.
On Monday.
So, if nothing changes after that.
Okay. And if you have any questions or concerns, get back to Stephen before our next meeting. Okay, okay, now, number 27. It's to now allow veterans' donation checkbox on the tax bill. Was this request from our agent?
Yes, it was a request from the agent.
Okay.
I guess, I appreciate the request. I guess the question is, what does that do to the town? I mean, people would check it off and increase the check they sent us by that amount of money?
By an amount established on there.
And are we opening ourselves up to check for the library and a check off for this adult center and a check off for this? I mean.
There's a check for president on your tax return.
But your state tax return has a place for six or eight different forms, you know, it doesn't mean it's right.
I believe if the statutes are going to allow all those boxes to be checked, and if the town accepts them, then we would add those boxes on the appropriate billings.
So, I get the, I get the opportunity to vote my conscience on this on town meeting floor, but I guess.
But that would still, it would go to our local veterans' office, those donations?
It does.
Yes, it would be under the control of the local veteran agent.
And it's specified uses. It's, as you can see, it's.
Emergency food, transportation, heat, and oil expenses.
Right.
For the veterans.
The veterans.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good.
And, okay, so the next one, legal expenses and veterans' benefits, number 28. So, we're overspending, or we're.
Well, this is, Mark and I.
Got a shortfall?
Yeah, we talked about this at the last meeting, I think Mark raised this issue. This was, we have a significant, we are significantly over budget for our legal expenses. Most of that's related to extra-legal work we had to have done right at the beginning of the fiscal year for the Converse Street acquisitions, the special town meeting. And then, the other one is, as I noted, Jesus has done a good job, you know, when we made the budgets based on the caseload at the time we made the budget, he has furthered his outreach and increased, you know, the caseload and discovered veterans who weren't getting the benefits, and that's what that's tied to.
Are these veterans, are these additional benefits to veterans, or are these additional costs to run the office, the department?
No, it's benefits.
No, veterans' benefits.
So, aren't these deferred, reimbursable by the state?
I think these are above and beyond those.
Okay.
Because otherwise, we would just do it through a provision that's already available to us and go for the 75%.
It's a 75-25 state match, it's not 100%.
Well, I understand that, but is, so is this our 25%? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, under what authority are these benefits being given, given out? And is this, you know, what, how much of this, I mean, is, I'm struggling whether this is already in our budget, we're increasing the line item, or it's new items?
No, it's increasing a current line item, there's $75,000 currently budgeted to pay veterans' benefits.
But my understanding was much of that was reimbursable by the state?
It is reimbursable by the state, however, there's about a 15-month lag.
Right, right.
By the time we get it, but we are, we are, I don't say we've exhausted yet, but we are on the verge of exhausting that $75,000 within a month or two, in order to get us through the fiscal year for, let's say, April, May, and June.
But this would also be added then and be 15 months down the road reimbursable by the state?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, that was my question, okay. That's, that's what I was.
Okay.
So, all we're doing is increasing the line item that.
That 75% and 15 months will come back to us.
Okay.
And my understanding is.
I think it ought to say that in there, that it's part of the current line item budget that's reimbursable, that's.
You wanna try to put that in the explanation?
Eventually reimbursable.
Yeah, maybe a note that says 75% of the $25,000 will eventually be reimbursed by the state, or something like that, right?
Well, I would just say 75% of any veterans' benefit is reimbursed by the state, with a 15-month lag, relatively a 15-month lag. I mean, I think the first part of it, supplemental funding to the FY17 budget is, kinda signifies that it's already a line item.
And this could be related, when he talked about in his report, that he's now got some federal portal, that things are moving along faster now that he's submitting, so it might just be acceleration of things we would have seen anyways.
I just think it's more outreach that he's done and has more veterans receiving a few more benefits.
Okay. All right, so see if you can add something to that that would satisfy Mark. And no other questions on act 28? You wanna talk to us about 29, MGM special revenue, and why that change is now being recommended?
As part of the closeout process for FY16, we did have a discussion with Department of Revenue Representatives and our representative down there, and they asked specifically about this mitigation money that we got for being a surrounding community agreement. And basically, what he said is that in the absence of a, of a special article to earmark this money for a special purpose, that is, that he would have to close it out into the general fund, and it'll become part of our free cash for FY 2018.
Oh, wow.
So, I didn't think that was the purpose that anybody wanted to see, so I am now presenting the warrant article that we would identify for a special use of those funds that we currently have available. I mean, the amount that we've expended is exactly what the surrounding community agreement said, it was basically for engineering services for Long Meadow Street. This would be in the same vein, be used for the same purpose, so it just memorializes that.
Paul, your explanation makes me feel better than having read this, and because the, some of the wording of this says, and that such funds be expended means like, and we're gonna spend them, as opposed to say such funds can only be expended in the exact way is outlined by the town surrounding community. You following that? It's a tense part, you know.
Because it's not gonna be done right away.
Right, right, right. It, I, when I saw this and was reading it, I said, so we're gonna spend this $850,000? It's like it's saying, and we expend it. Want me to read it to you again?
I'm just looking for the area that you probably will. I'll just take your amendments.
No, no, so it says, to see if the town will vote to designate the remaining funds from the upfront mitigation payment received from MGM as special revenue funds, and that such funds may only be expended in the exact way outlined in the town's surrounding community arbitration award.
Okay, I mean, I was actually looking at the explanation, that's why I couldn't find it.
Yeah, because you mentioned explanation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's the actual warrant article.
So, may only be expended in the exact way outlined.
Yeah.
As opposed to one word expended.
Because it sounds like it's.
Be expended.
You're authorizing it to be expended.
Yep, no, that's fine.
You following?
No, I do, and I think the thing in the explanation is, it is, it is for, instead of naming the intersections, I would just say, in accordance with the surrounding community agreement as determined by the arbitration award.
Right.
And that's the thing with the, this is a total comment, that's why I think the DOR thing is so stupid, because to tell us that an arbitration panel gave us this money, and in case of the A50, they did name the intersections. It's not like the 275 each year, where it's like public safety and infrastructure or whatever. It's these four intersections, you know, this is where this money's going, if the DOR say, oh, we're gonna roll that into free cash, I don't agree with, but that's, they get to decide, so.
Well, at least it's clear now, and everyone realizes it's not general fund money.
It's not slush fund, yeah.
Does it have to be done every year if it's not done?
No, no, this will only be done one time.
And just, and if people ask, you know, we are, we're trying to connect the tip project in this project, that's why we spent $90,000 on the design, and the designs are, I don't know, better than 25% done, but the overall project's in the millions, so.
Yeah, this tip project's now also the Raspberry Brook Mema, I mean, this is gonna be huge.
It's, it is huge.
Huge. And what year is this coming in?
You wanna move out of town.
Hopefully, 2021.
Not used for five.
Yeah, I mean, fiscal year 21?
21, okay.
That'll be what we're looking at.
All right, so MGM will be.
They'll be going.
Go on full blast by then.
No, not long, but yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on number 29? All right, going back to 30, anything on 30? Because that's what we were trying to correct from the Fall Town Meeting wording, and we sort of already voted on this at one of our meetings, but I just wanna make sure everyone's on page on what we agreed, and maybe if you see something that we've made a mistake on the wording, and recommend changes.
I'm just wondering if we're not gonna get pushed back on, from 30 days going down to 10 days, when our intent wasn't so much the amount of time as it was the demand fee? And are we better off sticking with, if it remains unpaid for 30 days and get the demand fee?
We make it something that.
It's a philosophical.
Right, but I mean, everything else is that 10-day window, so I'm just trying to keep it the way we have it.
I'm good with it, I just don't want it to fail over that, because what we want is the demand fee.
The issue last time was the shut offs.
But it was due process.
No, no. The issue last time was, it wasn't from, after the bill was due, it said from when the bill was issued.
And it was the shut offs, too. People got hung up on that, even though that was already in the initial bylaw.
But, well, the only thing is, it doesn't give a person a full month, I mean, it's a little shy, it's 25 days.
No, it does give, it gives them 30 days after the bill is due. So, you have, you have an issue date, you have 30 days to pay it, then it's 10 days before the demand notice goes out.
Okay.
So, they really have 40 days to get it done.
And then another 15 after that.
And then they'll get into that 15, but they have 30 days to pay it without any type of penalty or interest or demand charge.
So, that's, yeah, that's not bad.
And people were confused, because we couldn't see when the issue date was, and it's a clear notice date and period of time.
The issue date is right on the bill.
Yeah. Okay, so any other questions or concerns, you can also bring that back when we do the final vote, but let us know at any time. All right, now, this one, I know Rebecca.
Which one, 31?
31, Rebecca couldn't be here, but can you give us a little background on what she's looking for on 31?
Yeah, I think, and I haven't talked to her about it in a while, to be honest, she'd sent this some time ago, Debbie, I don't remember when she sent it, it was a while ago. I think if you look at the changes, it really has to do with.
Whether you stand up or you hold, hand up a card, it's all of this.
Well, I think it's a disabilities issue where some people don't have the physical ability to stand up, to vote, which means, under the strict interpretation of the bylaw, they, their vote wouldn't be counted, and so, to be sensitive to people with disabilities or people who have physical impairments, requiring, we're eliminating the stand-up requirement, just hold the card up.
So, the only thing is, we're still waiting for Rebecca to send in a little explanation on.
Yeah.
What you just said.
Right.
Why, I mean, maybe because I don't know the bylaws, but why isn't this at the discretion of the town moderator?
This is the existing bylaws, I mean, it's.
Well, if we're gonna change it, why don't we put it into the voting process, the visible voting process at the discretion of the town moderator?
Well, it's.
That's a question for Rebecca Town.
Yeah, she wants to do it this way, it's, she could have.
Actually, yeah, that's a good point. This is her discretion, she wrote this. This is what she's asking for.
Okay, so I guess we're just looking for the explanation to be put in that before we do the final vote. All right, now, the number 32, you wanna explain to us how this was dealing with, I think there were some problems in the original abandoned property?
Yeah, this is, this is something that the auditor has brought to our attention in the way that we're handling uncashed checks. Basically, what we're doing right now is, we're just basically putting them in a holding pattern, and then they're, I mean, we recognize the cash has come in, and we're just holding it in an account. What this actually does is sets up a process where we go through and we notify on, I don't know how many occasions, maybe one or two occasions, we try to get ahold of the people or the vendor that has not cashed a check, and if it goes for about a year's period with, I think, three notifications, then the town, at that point in time, can take that check and actually put it into its surplus account. Right now, it's not in our surplus account, it's just held as a liability, as us owing other people with these outstanding things. But again, it sets up a process for us to go through, I believe there are about three notifications that are sent to the, to the last known address of the, of the vendors or the people the checks are written to, and then, again, after that one year or so, we are then able to actually write these checks and put them into our surplus and be utilized to cash. our surplus and be utilized to cash.
So Paul, your explanation for cash checks was perfect. The question I have, and I think that may come up, is what other abandoned funds may fall into this category that we're going to have to be prepared to explain? Or maybe there aren't any other abandoned funds?
There aren't any other abandoned funds that I'm aware of.
So should we put that into the explanation, that, that, as far, to our best knowledge, this only applies to uncashed checks as abandoned funds or so, only because, you know, just a question, because I think...
Well, yeah, we wouldn't want to think that we're getting money from the banks or something.
Well, no, no, it's a disposition of abandoned funds, because somebody might interpret abandoned funds maybe...
How else would we interpret it? I'm trying to...
Well, I think people are concerned that if they don't do something, you know, the individuals don't do something, of funds that they're...
Well, actually, they have to cash the check.
Right, they have to cash the towns, town doesn't issue a lot of checks to town residents.
And, well, no, sometimes, don't we do refunds? We could do a refund, right?
Yeah, there's a refund due, when people come to us and it's a proper claim, and we're going to make payment.
But what I'm saying is, then it could become abandoned property if that person never cashes the check, and we keep sending the notice to them.
Right, then we, yeah, then again, we're going to reissue. I mean, that's the whole intent, is to try to reissue these in a proper manner, as opposed to just holding on to them and, again, having them in a, you know, basically, it's a liability account that says, well, we have your money, but we're not doing anything to try to find anyone.
Yeah.
It's kind of like what the state does with their surplus abandoned property themselves, they're trying to notify the people to come and make their claim, and after a certain period of time, I think those are going to end up in the state's coffers, that if, you know, after they follow procedural, set of procedural steps, then people, I don't want to say they've become out of luck, but the state has a right for that.
And this is processed, because we're not talking about a bank account now where we have thousands sitting.
No, but we have checks probably, we might have, I mean, there's a lot of small checks, let me be clear about that. You know, there's, there's a number of them that are a couple cents that have gone out, but there are some checks that might be a couple hundred, a couple thousand dollars, that we've tried to notify people, and for whatever reason, they're just not cashed.
And they're right now just, every year, sitting in an account?
They're just sitting, they're sitting in an account, we are, we are not actively trying to pursue the individuals. This would set up a procedure for us to actively pursue those individuals who do not cash these checks in a timely manner.
Paul, I think it's a great, it's a great proposal. I just think that we need to, you know, somehow make sure that people understand it only deals with uncashed town checks, and then it should fly through once we make that clear.
Yeah, I just want to relook at the statute just to make sure.
Okay. All right, so you'll get back to us on that?
Yeah.
All right, number 33. I'm sorry, Tom.
I just had one more question, is that if, if we put this in an interest-bearing account, then would we be liable to pay interest if the person ever claimed the money at some point in the future?
I do believe the statute addresses that, and I just don't have the statute, but I can find that out also, Tom.
Okay, I mean, I would think so, that we...
Yeah, I would think so, too. I just don't have an answer for it. I can't find the statute, I don't know if I have it in my office.
That would be actually an advantage to the folks who haven't cashed the checks, too, is that they would get at least some interest if they ever show up for it. Okay.
Okay, number 33, do you want to explain that one?
I mean, basically, it's usually one year before, if someone's delinquent on their taxes, it would be up to, the statute had it a year before you could deny them a building permit until they paid up their taxes, which is really not, obviously, a sound business practice. And so the Municipal Modernization Act gave it to, gave local control over setting that timeline, and we're asking for 60 days.
Right. The, again, as Stephen said, the statute also correlated with a bylaw, so our bylaw that we have matches statute, which was a year, and while the Municipal Modernization Act relaxed that, we still have the bylaw, if we want to do anything different, we need to change the bylaw.
And so this is not just taxes but fees assessments, so if they don't pay their water bill?
Right, they don't pay, they don't pay for a milk permit, as an example. This would fall into that same category.
Okay.
I mean, it seems to me that the explanation is, this brings our bylaws into agreement with the, with the most recent state law, as opposed to...
But the state law doesn't identify a specific timeframe.
Okay.
It gives the town the choice to pick that timeframe.
As opposed to it used to be...
As it used to be, a year, the bylaw matched the statute before. Now, the Municipal Modernization Act left that part of it up to the discretion of the town.
Do people have any issue with 60 days?
No, I think that sounds reasonable.
I mean, all you're doing for, say, pay up in 60 days if you want to do any business with the town.
If you want to do anything more with the town, we're going to...
That's all, that's all it's, right?
Yeah.
I think it's reasonable.
It's more reasonable.
All right, so those are the only ones we were going to cover and review today. I saw we just got one citizen's petition in, and you're going to send us a copy of that, so we'll...
We'll send them all at once.
All right, so next week?
After the deadline.
Which is next Tuesday, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so let's move on to your quarterly investment report.
Okay. Well, the first and most important part of the quarterly investment report is that we're following all the provisions and have met all the guidelines, which, again, I'll quickly go over, that we have no long-term investments that exceed the five, no long-term investments that exceed the five, five-year limit. The individual bank balances run for $5 million for each, each bank. Every bank that we are dealing with has a green rating by Veribank, which is the highest rating that the Veribank outfit has, and all the accounts are fully insured and secured. Just by way of notice, we've opened up a few CDs over the last three months, we are noticing that the interest rates are going up slightly, so we have been successful in getting higher interest rates than the previous renewals that we had, but I will also, at the same time, when we're borrowing money, we also see that we are also paying a little bit more money. The bond anticipation note that came due in December, which we renewed at, I believe it was 0.9%, that was taken out at 0.7%. So it's good that we have cash and more cash, that we're earning a little bit more money and don't have that much outstanding in the form of short-term debt, but again, those interest rates are creeping up on the expenditure side. We were using an investment outfit called Bartholomew over a number of years. We only had CDs with them over the last three or four years, all those CDs, the last CD or CDs became due in January. We liquidated all those funds, took custody of those funds, we are no longer dealing with Bartholomew, it has nothing to do with Bartholomew's performance, but the tightness of our investment policy and what we can actually go out and invest in, we're able to make those investments internally, it's basically CDs, without having to pay the fees that they, that they would, that they would take for finding CDs locally or CDs nationally for us, so all that is now done internally. Recently, we also had some competition for handling our bank, our daily bank deposits between two banks. We were using United Bank, they had some competition, there was an offer made by People's Bank, they kind of went back and forth with, I don't say a little bidding war, but we did set up a date for final and last offers of how we're going to do this, instead of playing one against the other. And finally, we got, it was People's Bank that came in at 0.76% as opposed to the 0.6% that we were earning before. So again, we have another situation, or I shouldn't say situation, but another, more evidence, again, that we are getting higher interest rates and trying to invest our money in the best possible way that we can. Other than that, I've just, you know, we, we had an increase in our bank balances for the quarter of over $2 million for, again, the period of October 1st through December 31st, probably due to where the first quarter, the main money coming in, as far as revenue was concerned, was strictly from property taxes. We did have additional money coming in in quarter two from the timing of the water and sewer bills to a certain degree. So that, that's one of the reasons why we have a greater amount at the end of this quarter two, as opposed to the end of quarter one. Also, quarter one, we also have a lot of upfront payments that we're paying in full. Our retirement assessment, which is a $3 million assessment, was paid in full to take care of discounts, you know, that was paid in January. Also, our, our insurance bills for workers' compensation and property and casualty insurance was paid all upfront, again, to take care of discounts that we would get for short, for upfront payment. All those went out in Janu, all those went out in July, so there's a lot of upfront money that went out in that first quarter. Again, some of the reasons why we have that $2 million gain of our cash position over that quarter. Other than that, I don't really have anything more to say on this. I don't know if there's questions, it is pretty straightforward, and I'll let you folks ask the questions if there are any.
Any questions for Paul?
People's, People's Bank, did the, did you watch The Price is Right? Where someone's like bidding on the thing, and they're like, two, they'll say $2,000, and the guy next to you, $2,001.
Right.
And I read that, I was like...
Point seven five, point seven.
Yeah, that's what it reminds me of. It's all, it's all, I mean, it's Paul, no, it's a big jump. So I want to come in, Paul, in Cheryl.
You should have borrowed a lot more money, we're...
You should have borrowed, you know, the fact of the matter, too, I mean, you know, if you look at it, you say, gee, we borrowed at 0.9, and we're getting 0.125, 0.11 on some of these things. Knock on wood, it's not a direct relationship between those monies, but we are doing fairly well with the type of investment practices that we do have, and we try to keep everything in those higher earning accounts by, you know, monitoring on a fairly consistent basis, so.
No A-word here.
But, but Paul, that, but, but Paul, that does raise the question of if, you know, not, not asking you to be a foreteller of interest rates, but, you know, for many years now, at least that I've been on the board, we've been, been using bond anticipation notes to our advantage, because the prices are, were very, very low, the interest rate was very, very low, and there were no issuance costs. But, you know, if we can see, you know, some reason that we'd want to consolidate projects in the future, is, you know, are you looking at when maybe that, that technique has used up its usefulness, and it's time to go out and lock in a price as things increase?
Certainly, it's always on the radar screen, but for these small things that we're using bond anticipation notes, you know, we're borrowing, we have practice, or we have authorizations for, you know, $500 for, you know, the new fire truck, as an example, something like that. It's like, if we can take advantage for a couple years of those low interest rates and eliminate the issuance cost, even at year five, if we're up to the point where the short-term and long-term rates are the same, we would have made the money and saved money on the upfront, or even if we had to pay a little bit higher at the flip side, we probably, again, would be saving because of the way that it's structured right now.
Okay.
So again, because the issuance costs are $20,000 on certain bond issues, I mean, I know even if we banded them together, a number of them...
Right, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
$20,000 is a lot of money to make up an interest cost as opposed to what we're paying here, and, you know, I will say, there's not, there's not zero cost. We are charged about a $500 bill for every band that we have going out, but it's going to take a lot of those to add up to that $20,000, so.
But it's not like we can put together some water projects and some sewer projects and some of these projects and some...
If there were, if there were larger amounts that we were going out into the bond market, I would certainly look at some of those at that point in time, but there is nothing of a large magnitude that we really have, except with the DPW, but the smaller projects at the water and sewer proposing for the coming years, those are, those are really small potatoes coming around here, so.
Okay.
And so, well, but in terms of the DPW project or senior center, so this is really a good time to get in the market for loans, because the interest rates are going to go up, right?
The interest rates are projected to go up, there's no doubt about that. They have creeped up, as we witnessed on the short term, and even to some degree on the long term, in the long-term markets.
Yeah.
You know, how high, or when, when are we going to be ready to do that? You know, it's, regardless, when it, when it comes to something like both of those projects being into millions and millions of dollars, we're going to be out in the, we're going to be out in the long-term market. I don't think there's any way that we're going to be able to roll over bands. The other thing with bands, Tom, too, there is a limitation right now, it used to be five years, you can only take out a band for 10 years, and for us to try to fit it, paying off $20 million or a $6 million Council on Aging project in 10 years, that's a lot of money to come up upfront.
Okay, I see, all right. Thank you.
So I guess, overview, nothing you're really concerned about now, coming up in the future? Everything's looking pretty good right now.
With cash or...
The cash looks great.
You're giving it a pretty wide open.
Nothing's keeping you off your mind, Ben.
You have another tree ball in your office.
Yeah. You know, Stephen and I have worked on the budget, we're keeping our fingers crossed. The biggest, the biggest concern there still is that those Scantic Valley rates, they were supposed to meet, I believe, February 10th, and then it was rescheduled again, snowstorms on both of those times, the next scheduled to meet on March 1st. That, if we get a favorable number, there is still a cushion built in to the, to the manager's budget, and if we meet that number, then the budget's going to be looking pretty good. If we don't, Stephen and I will scratch our heads and figure it out. But I don't think we're going to be too far off with that, with that budget, and, you know, we're, you know, things don't look too bad at this point in time. We got a very favorable number from the school, and that's really what was the saving grace this year, was that number from, from the school department.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Paul?
No, no, it sounds great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and town, two-night town meeting. It's been brought up because we have so many warrant articles, and not just the number, is that we have so many projects that are all coming in at the same time from our expense side, when we look at the DPW, IT funding, as well as the, the adult center, and then we look at the revenue side of the other things we're trying to bring in on revenue, there's a lot of changes here. The question is, do we try to jam it into all one night? Do we have, we have a second night as a rollover, or do we try to roll it out in a way that is more convenient to the residents to come? And we'll probably end earlier if we have a two-night meeting, and then people can also come and, what they do anyways, which is come in for their warrant articles and then they leave. I hate to put people through a, if we start at 7:00 and we end at midnight, which we've been known to do, five hours is, I think, brutal, beyond brutal. Do you want to have a cutoff top point, where we roll over to the second night, or let people know ahead of time as a new way of doing it, saying, these are the articles that will be dealt with hopefully between 9:00 and 7:00 and 9:00 on the first night, and 7:00 and 9:00 on the second night?
Maria, I'm of the opinion that work expands to fill the time available, work contracts to fill the time limited, and my sense is that, although it sounds really nice to say, let's schedule two nights, what we're going to find is that the, whatever we schedule for the first night, you're not going to do from 7:00 to 9:00, you're going to do from 7:00 to midnight. And, and, you know, because I don't think you can, you know, force that issue, and having gone through a lot of these, you know, not intending to cut off the discussion, but, you know, last, last year proved that, you know, when people want to get the project, get, get the work done, you know, nothing was not acted on last, last, last year. You know, it may not have been acted on as thoroughly, but it was acted on, and, and I suspect that the same would happen, especially if people go in there looking at a 35 or 40 warrant article town meeting, you know. I've been doing this for, going on 40 years, and to say, you know, boy, we shouldn't have town meetings that go to... Town meetings have lasted late more often than they haven't lasted late, and so, you know, I don't see the, the great benefit of a, of a second night.
You know, last year, there, or last meeting, we, town meeting, Rebecca crunched some into piles and she called, had some term for, can any of these be done that way?
Consent agenda.
Yeah, can any of these be done that way?
Yeah, it ended up, if you remember the discussion on the consent agenda...
People started pulling things out, you got to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I, to some extent, I do, and Rebecca does send her apology, she's not feeling well, although I know her position is, the select board sets the town meetings, and she moderates them, you know, so she would give her guidance on what could happen. One of the, the one piece of advice she gave is that if you do a two-night town meeting, you can schedule the warrant articles and say it's going to be 1 through 25 on the first night, and if that takes till midnight or 9:00 PM, that's what we do, and on the second night, it's Article 26 through the end, through all the citizen's petitions. What that does is a couple of things that are, in my mind, are positive. Listen, nobody wants to be there two nights, not the least of which is me. But I think one of the things, and I'm not, and I think this is kind of a one-off, I don't see this as an annual thing, what distinguishes this year's warrant that has got Maria and I, and we've engaged Rebecca in this conversation, is, well, first of all, we don't know what the citizen's petitions are, and last year, what we saw was... And last year, what we saw was when people started moving citizens petitions up and down the, up and down the, you know, the timeline for consideration, it got a little destabilizing. We've heard feedback from seniors that a lot of times their stuff, even following the warrant, gets late for them. They don't like being there late. And last year, we went past midnight because of the, largely because of citizens petitions. And so, the stuff got ran through and we did, we did act on everything, I mean, the town budget and we asked any questions. CPA articles went through three, four at a time. But it was a pretty standard warrant in terms of town business. This year, we have an enterprise fund that we're proposing. We have the district improvement financing that we're proposing that is not only new to this warrant, it's a real, it's a new concept to most people in this town, and I can tell you, it's exceptionally important to us right now because a timeline that is critical to be met depends on town meeting voting, and we have a lot to lose if that doesn't happen. We also have an inter municipal agreement about power transit, which is a no brainer, as you suggested, Mark. But those are the ones that are like, why are we doing this? What, you know, why do we need, why do we need power transit or what, you know? You know, you mentioned, I forget what the article was, leave an hour for that. Those types of things come up and you end up spending an hour on article, you didn't, like the water rate, the water late fee by law last year.
DPW.
The DPW is is on the, the, well.
Taking and the funding.
The taking and the funding will be, well, I'm hoping if the select board approves it, will be on the warrant. Additional money for senior center design. The warrant, to me, has a lot of things on it that are outside what I would consider to be the norm. And if people in five minutes say, we get the diff, we're in, boom, boom, vote. Same thing with the DPW, we've been talking about it for thirty years, let's go, boom, and we're done by nine o'clock, so be it. But I'd rather have that than be at twelve thirty still waiting to consider whether or not we're going to do a diff or a DPW. And that's where I think my appeal to the citizens would be, we're not doing it because we feel like being there two nights. We want to just make sure that really important town business. And another thing for the select boards, Marina and I talked about this earlier today. I mean, I don't know if we talk about finding ways to generate additional revenue, expanding our tax base, you know, tightening up our bylaws. I don't know if we talk about that at every single meeting we have, but we talk about them at a lot of meetings. And we talk about them at great length when we go through our goal setting sessions. And when you go through a lot of these big articles that we're that we're bringing forward, they are either addressing longstanding town problems or they are new revenue streams or new approaches, new bylaw approaches, or, you know, even the municipal budget is, should be the biggest deal every year. And to some extent, it, you know, because we work, have been working with the schools, we've tried to avoid additional conflict. But this is, this stuff is the stuff, you know, we've been wanting to do for a long time and been talking about for a long time. And now we've kind of, now the fact that a lot of it is kind of coalescing at the same time makes it so, I feel like people are going to get overwhelmed by the weight of it, or by, not the weight of it, but it's a lot to process for the people who, who, even people who follow town affairs closely, I think, have asked questions about, you know, what's a diff? What's the store more utility mean, was, you know? And we want to make sure we can explain all that stuff and as long as it takes and educate the community. So if it weren't for those things that are beyond the norm, I'd be the first person to say, I don't want to be there two nights. I'm, you know, I'd rather be there till midnight. But I think if, you know, for, in fairness to people like the seniors who have complained often about having to be there till midnight, if you had, if you were able to set the warrant article for something they're particularly interested in, like additional design money for senior center, you could conceivably make that the first warrant article in the second night.
I was going to say, because I've had, I've had comments like that, you know, some of the people said that, you know, they can't get up and around very much, but they watch the town meetings, and, you know, plenty of them go there, that they not be pushed to the back of the, moved up a little bit earlier in the process so they can.
Everybody wants their warrant articles first. Every, and here's the thing, the seniors may say, may get there and say, okay, we want, so call the senior center design funding, if the select board, and this is, this is all, of course, hypothetical, because it's like, you guys have to put on. Say that goes on there and it's Article ten, not bad. And then you have ten, five citizens petitions. And then people start jockeying for position to be in the warrant. I mean, where does that end? And then, you know, and then what get, what gets pushed to the back, to the end of the warrant? Our OPEB trust, you know, do we want to walk out of town meeting? I mean, is, you know, we, I suppose if the OPEB trust doesn't get done, we can do it in the fall. But these are types of things that people want to see us do.
Well, I just, I mean, I, I think that, you know, we're lucky, you know, Rebecca Townsend, this will be her third town meeting, and she's really efficient. And I really don't see the time, you know, that to say, oh, we have two days, we're going to expand to fill two days. I really believe she's going to do a nice job of keeping it condensed, but I think there is a lot of concepts to process. And and some of these are really important, and we don't want people making these decisions that really affect the town in a pretty big way. You know, at eleven thirty at night and just sort of, you know, not many people are there. And I just, you know, I think it's, it's more fair to the town members if we do split it up. I mean, I guess I, I was resistant at first, but I, you know, I really think that we could do it quickly and, but I think we'd also want to make sure that warrant articles that are set for one night and set for another night, and they can't jump from night to night, you know? I mean, we probably legally can't do that anyways, but.
Once you've kind of set the schedule, it's not fair because people.
Yeah, it's not fair for people to say, well, we want them from the next, the other night to come to this night. So, you know, we'll have to, and I don't know if there's a special way that we could let people in town know about what articles are going to be discussed which night, so then if they had a preference, they could come on that night. But it's a big change, you know, we haven't done it in how many years? I don't know, does anyone know?
I don't think we've ever done it, by my knowledge, yeah.
I know they've done it.
Modern town meetings.
In modern times, yeah.
Sure Rebecca could probably tell you.
Richard actually investigated it, he has the dates.
Yeah.
The last time.
But it wasn't like a hundred years ago, I think in one of the last twenty, it's happened once or twice, but not.
Not by intent.
Yeah, so.
And I think it's not just the seniors, I mean, we're now putting daycare or some sort of childcare in so that parents can come and both parents can be there. And kids have to get to bed and people have health issues to say, well, we're just going to take it to the, to midnight and as long as we need to go. I think if we're going to have a functional town meeting where people can really discuss it and physically be well enough to do it, I think it's worth a try. It might, we might decide and the town feedback might be, don't ever do that again, or maybe they'll say, this is, this is the way we want town meeting. So I think it's worth it to try different things, and this might be the year to do it.
But we need to understand that we will never be able to please every group who wants to be in and out of there quickly, have their article be taken, you know, and, you know, we've said the seniors want, well, I know the seniors like it, but there are other groups who would also like to be for it. Somebody's got to be last, and what you don't want to have is the, you know, the, the articles with no natural constituency that are the most important, sitting there with, you know, losing your quorum. And that's what's going to happen, I think, in trying to get town people to commit to two days. And and because you're going to end up with two different town meetings, really. You're going to have two different, you know, there's going to be core people that are there potentially both nights, but you're going to have two different town meetings and that's a, that's a concern. I would much rather see us try to figure a way to make these things, and that's one of the reasons I kept suggesting combined CPA projects or even the way things were approved last year, when they're, I mean, you know, nobody's ever stand, stood up, I can't, every member of town meeting, other than somebody saying, what is the Gulfways Trust, to stand up and question that. You know, and for us to sit there and read that thing every year and the same thing we do it, and the vending machine article for the schools every year, Paul saying we may not need it this year, you know, again.
But that's with the consent agenda thing, I think, and this will be the second year she does it, we can wrap some of the consent agenda. I still think, and based on recent experience, that I think if we don't allow ourselves, and here's the thing, you can do what we did last year, which is, in the moderator can announce at the beginning, if we don't get done by a certain time, I will, you know, entertain a motion to adjourn town meeting to the following night. And we did, and the town meeting, remember, we paused at the hour and town meeting made a decision to just forge ahead. And there may have been some questions to whether or not there remained a quorum. I think we're going to end up in that situation either way, Mark, where things like the OPEB and the by, and the debt, the unpaid bills and all these kind of bylaw things that we want to clean up our, our own set of governance are going to end up being kind of orphaned at the end. And people are going to say, you know, this isn't important, let's adjourn, and then it's another, and then if, and if we bring it back in the fall, people are going to say, well, we shouldn't be doing stuff like this in the fall because these are important matters. And this is why I'm always having this conversation about fall versus spring and when we have time. So the one thing I would say, or not the one thing, but to, by scheduling in advance, you eliminate some of the uncertainty and jockeying for position that happens, because you're right, you can't keep everybody first. But you can at least let everybody know where they're going to stand at the beginning of the night.
So I guess the, the, the natural question is, how and who gets to schedule what goes on the first night and what goes on the second night?
The select board does. We're going to be, in fact, the ordering of articles, I think, is going to be very important to keep your quorum and to get the flow of things going.
But what's proven is, we can only set the articles in the warrant, we can't set the, the, the order of articles as they're handled in town meeting. Because the first person in town meeting, the first thing they do is stand up and say, I move that we consider Article fifty two first.
The previous town moderator never allowed that.
But Rebecca's already proven that she does.
We can talk to the moderator if we're concerned about the changing of order and the retention of what they call a quorum.
But if you say these articles are going to be Tuesday and these articles are going to be Wednesday, that is not movable.
And Stephen, I absolutely believe there's, you know, if we think it's two nights worth of things, that's the only way to do it properly. You can't just let it overflow because that, that doesn't work, no.
So, yeah, I mean, I think, Mark, sorry to interrupt, but you have, that's the thing. And this is the discussion that Maria and I have talked about having. Do we think this is two nights' worth of business? I think the DPW and the diff by themselves, because of the DPW, because people are still asking, why does it cost so much? Why can't it go where it is? Why do we need this type of building? Those are short questions with long answers. And then, you know, and the store more utilities, like, well, how's this work? How'd you get the fee? Those are like a special town meeting by themselves, I think. And so, the question is, do we think we have two nights' worth of work to do, of business to do? To me, the answer is yes, based on, based on what I've seen in the past few town meetings.
Yeah, the thing is, I normally wouldn't look at a two night meeting. I'm really concerned, there's so many issues here, that if we're really going to allow people to speak five pro, five against, each of these things will, will never make it through the night.
Well, because if we, if we rush it in one night with this many articles, basically what we're telling people and we're setting a pattern is just, listen to us, you know, make a few comments and then pass this thing through or vote on it. And we really want people to think about these, you know, make good contributions in terms of discussion because we have people in town who really do understand the stuff, they, they prepare for these meetings and they make great statements. And to, to say, well, you know, we, we don't have time for any more statements, you know, I think sometimes we do ourself a disservice and in this with so much, so many items, I mean, I think that's the only thing. I mean, I don't think we'll have to do this, hopefully we wouldn't have to do this next year, but I think this year might be one of these situations.
Any comments from anybody, how they feel about one or two?
I mean, I think nobody likes the idea of a two night town meeting, but I don't think they are really as familiar with what we're loading the warrant up with as, as we are.
But, you know, I, I think that we have not appropriately or properly taken advantage of, of educating people in advance. I say that knowing full well that even when we try, people don't show up to, to get educated in advance, whether you have town, you know, forums or whatever it is. But, but, you know, and, and what turns out is, we end up trying to do that education in town meeting, and by then it's very late and very limited. And that's the, in my opinion, the shortfall for here as opposed to people coming in well educated and using their time to, if they, if you will sway rather than then learn.
Well, the moderator is trying to set up forums and she's already booked some times, the end of April. We're talking about doing the LCTV also and doing a rollout. I know that there's been a lot of articles, press releases in regards to each of these major projects, but we know people go at town meeting and will ask something that had been discussed two years ago on why can't it stay? And that's when they want to have the answer, and it's their right, they're the legislative body.
Yeah, and I, let me, let me reframe this a little bit, because I've been thinking a lot about this because I know people are going to be, they're going to complain about a two night town meeting. Or they're also going to complain that the town meeting went too late and they're going to complain that there was this, I mean, and to your point, Mark, I mean, we, you know, I, you know, we spend a lot of time in these meetings talking about these issues. I work with the news media to get them in, you know, in the paper, the repirer did a good job in the DPW. I still get people saying, well, I didn't know anything about it, there's no information out there. I mean, it's just, it, it, that part is really frustrating, but, you know, and Rebecca is going to do a forum, it will be well attended. But there are people who may know about the project and just really want to get up and express themselves for five minutes on it. Five for, five in favor, five against, if you average them out at two minutes apiece, that's ten minutes per side, that's twenty minutes per article, plus a couple of minutes for introduction. Now you're talking, you know, now you start adding the time up, and that's under the best case scenario because many times you'll have ten people in line against something or in favor of something, and you may have nobody in line on the other side of the issue, and then that's how things start to roll along. I think if we, if the select board, you know, the pro, so on the pro side, you do a two night town meeting, and the worst thing that happens is, people are upset that they had scheduled plans for Wednesday and now the article they're interested is on Wednesday night and they complain about that. And Tuesday night, we just whip through it and get good results on everything, and now we're done and it's nine o'clock and we all go home and people start, you know, crabbing at us on the way out. See, I told you we didn't need two nights and all this other stuff. On the flip side, we do one night and say, we're going to just take our chances. And then it is midnight and we still have really important town business to be done. And now we're faced with either rolling over into the second night anyway, calling a special meeting at some point in time in the near future, or just living without whatever it was we needed, and like I said, in the case of certain items, really at some risk to the town's best interests, letting it go. And that's, that's my big concern. So when I look at what's the pros cons, taking a little bit of heat for doing what I think we believe to be in the best interest of, giving the community the opportunity to learn as much as they can in that meeting and ask all the questions and have a good decision making process on new big things, to me, it's worth it.
All right, is anyone ready to put a motion on the floor?
And do you have any idea of citizens petitions, no way of knowing what's going to come in?
I mean, not till Tuesday, you know, I guess, I guess what I would say is, you know, the first meeting in March, you could hold off. I think we know enough today, you know, like to answer Mark's question, do we have two nights' worth of business? To me, it seems like we do, and the more time we have to, I mean, I already did reserve the gym. When we first started talking about this a month ago, I said.
Whether it was a rollover or two nights.
I said, we better reserve the gym, I can see where this is going. But I think, you know, there's, there's some time involved in setup and breakdown and some logistics on the DPW's end, obviously, because they set the room up. But I think the more we can plan, the more we can get the word out that this is happening. If people just go bananas about it and you can always.
They can always change.
You can always roll it back, until, until the warrant is posted, you can always roll it back. But I would say, the longer we can plan, the better we are.
All right, well, I would, I'd be willing to forward a motion that we would hold a two nights of town meeting, one being Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand seventeen, and the next being on Wednesday, May tenth, at seven P M., both those meetings.
I will second that.
And in part of the discussion, I know you've got Greenwood set aside for the ninth for childcare. Do we need to do that for the tenth then, too?
We can do that, we can make that available. Yeah, we haven't, we've held off on advertising the childcare, but I want to make sure that people watching at home are clear. You know, there was requests to do childcare in various ways. And then maybe you guys may get some negative feedback on how we're choosing to do it, but we are in the daycare business. And so, we take care of people's kids and we charge them for that and.
We have a place.
We have a place and, but there are costs, we are going to incur cost to open the building, have our people there who are Cory checked and licensed and, you know, having a couple of rooms here in the. of rooms here in the high school set up, so people can drop off their kids, is not how we take care of other people's children. So we wanna do it, you know, and it's no big deal, they drop off the kids, they go to Greenwood, they drop off the kids at Greenwood, they come here, and then when they wanna leave, they can go back to Greenwood and pick the kids up. But we are gonna assess a charge for that, because we are gonna incur cost, unbudgeted cost, to be open. I know there are other, I know there are some other options out there for in-house babysitting that Rebecca has been working with some other groups on, you know, I'm sure she's available for comment on that, I mean, I don't wanna compete against, we're going to invest the resources into opening Greenwood, I don't wanna compete against ourselves, but there are other options for people who don't wanna go to Greenwood. The other thing is, you know, in my mind, always goes to like, okay, how's that gonna look in real time? Having a child drop off in our entrance to our high school, when, you know, coming into town meeting and registering is often crowded as well, as good a job as our election workers do getting people through, it's very busy in that lobby. Adding some kind of child drop-off component to it would be really unwieldy, and so that's where, having it in a separate building where we're comfortable and we can handle, you know, there's no room in here that's set up to handle infants. So if you have an infant and a four-year-old, what are you gonna do? So Greenwood will be set up for all ages of children, and will be, will be advertised, now that, if this decision gets made, we'll be advertising it and ready for the two nights.
And I assume it'll be ready to go, so that people can drop off their kids and get here for a 7:00 o'clock meeting?
Absolutely.
All right, any further discussion on the vote?
I would just say that, you know, we are keeping the option open, that if, you know, not a lot of citizens' petitions come in, we get a lot of pushback on it, or whatever, maybe some of these warrant articles, Mark said, were not explained well enough, get explained better, and there's a way to change it back to one night. Other than that, you know, I think that, you're right, we have to plan for it now.
Yeah, I mean, something, plan for it now, see what kind of feedback you get from the community, and I think if the board wants to make a recommendation on what is on the consent agenda, and try and still work till the very last minute to try and make it one night as efficient as possible, so be it, but let's at least plan.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right, thank you very much. And as you said, we'll relook at this, 'cause we're gonna have to also look at order and deal with consent issues, consent agenda issues. Any subcommittee reports? No. The only thing I can say is Scantic Valley, we're waiting March 1st, and that's when we'll be setting those rates. And the Energy Task Force, thank you for listening to us, will come back with a, maybe a few-point plan on going forward with the streetlights, and what our recommendations are on that. And Pioneer Valley Transit, nothing going on, other than that.
Change in leadership.
Yeah, change in leadership, that's true.
Mary McGinnis is retiring.
Okay. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to go to executive session. We do not need to reopen in regular session? Is there a motion?
We adjourn to executive session for purposes of discussing contracts, not to resume an open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mark?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much for joining us. We will have another meeting next Monday, on the 27th. We'll be going through the rest of the warrant articles, and we'll also be discussing the SOI, and the, we will have someone coming in, and we'll have an executive session, too, so it's actually gonna be a little bit of a longer meeting. All right, thank you very much for joining us.